Yeah.
Storm, you mean like lightning? You mean like thunder and lightning?
Oh yeah, thunder, lightning and, and I mean heavy rain for a little bit there.
Yeah, it's a lot of lightning. A lot of lightning.
My window was open, but I guess I slept through it or it wasn't as much as the sweat then. Well, that's good. Water for the forest is good.
Yeah, yeah, and the gardens and, nope, everybody woke up because of the storm and the cats were, the cats were loud as well.
Thunder and lightning over the here too. Flew out the internet and the new puppy slept through it all.
Great.
God bless the puppy that sleeps through lightning. Okay.
I'm really glad because I really didn't need to have a lab in bed with all of us.
Get a little warm, huh?
Any, anytime you're ready.
You already get the foot.
Anytime you're ready, Myron, we can start.
Good morning. I'm now going to call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for July 14th to order. To start our meeting, I've done a roll call and all our commissioners are in attendance. And I'll read to you the statement regarding our reasons for having a telephone conference for our, our board meeting. The following statements should be made at the beginning of any meeting that commissioners attend by telephone to ensure that the record reflects the necessary information to support telephone attendance. Number one, it has been determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the COVID-19 pandemic and the related peacetime emergency declaration made by Governor Walz in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Chapter 12. Number two, we have ensured that all members of the body participating in the meeting, wherever their physical location, can hear one another and can hear all discussions and testimony offered at today's meeting. Number three, we have also ensured that members of the public present at the regular meeting location of the body can hear all discussion and testimony and all votes of the members of the body. We have urged the public not to attend this meeting in person because of the COVID-19 pandemic and have ensured that members of the public can view and monitor the meeting remotely in real time by broadcasting the meeting on the Cook County website. Number four, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we have determined that it may be unfeasible for county attorney Brady Powers, county attorney Molly Icken, county administrator Rena Rogers, and members of the Board of Commissioners to be physically present at the county boardroom at the Cook County courthouse. Number five, all votes will be conducted by roll call, so each member's vote on each issue will be identified and recorded. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We will go to looking at the agenda. Something was sent out yesterday to update the agenda. I hope all the commissioners saw that, as well as the public. So I'm asking if there's any adjustments to the agenda at this time? Okay. Then the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Commissioner Mills. I move to approve the agenda. Over.
Okay. So we have a motion, support.
Second, Commissioner DuKirk.
Commissioner DuKirk, thank you for support. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye.
Mr. Story?
Aye.
Mr. Versandzla, thank you. This time we have a public comments period and I believe that Administrator Rogers has received some, so she is going to read those. Is there anyone in the audience that's appeared since we, I talked to you previously to, to read anything or are they all going to be done by you, Commissioner Rogers, Administrator Rogers?
Did I get a promotion? I'm just kidding. So.
Yeah, well, I'm not getting a promotion. It's a very morning flip.
So there's, there is no one present to read public comments, but I have received quite a, quite a stack. So some, many, many of them are short and I should be able to go through them quickly, but this may take a while. Do you want to limit?
Okay, let's take the timer.
Do you want to limit the time at all or?
Fifteen minutes.
I don't think so. I, I'm, it's something that's changed since yesterday. If I think it's reasonable, we usually have 30 minutes, but if it's, you know, if you think you can do it in 35 or 40, you know, then I think for equity purposes, everyone should have their spread.
Okay.
That is my recommendation.
I, I, I think it's doable in 30 minutes, but it's, it'll be close.
Okay.
All right. The first letter signed by Pat Campanero, Heidi DuKirk, Lana Olson, Judy Barsness, Hillary Freeman, Carol Mork, Gwen Danfeld, Marcia Hyatt, Sue Hakes, Beth Kennedy, Rita Plord, Jennifer Trowbridge, and Rovina Claxton says, "We, the undersigned, stand in solidarity with Stacy Drouillard in calling for action by the Cook County Minnesota Board of Commissioners and county staff to address systemic racism in our community. Though not necessarily intended, systemic racism can exist when the dominant culture creates policies, programs, practices, and norms that cause often unrepresented minorities, especially indigenous people and people of color, to feel excluded and not welcomed in the community. As a group of women, community members, we call on you to provide leadership to determine what changes need to be made to foster a diverse and inclusive Cook County community. We must move beyond conversation to results." And then signed the individuals that, whose names I listed. I have a letter here from Deb Dobleman, Superior Herbals. "Please ask the county board to petition the governor for a statewide mask requirement. Being an immune-compromised senior resident of Cook County, I am fearful of going anywhere in our county. As careful as there are times we need to leave our home for supplies and there are businesses who don't wear or require masks, and even the businesses who ask patrons to wear masks, many don't. Please support any way we can stand together for the good of all." Deb Dobleman. I have a letter from Lisa Bauer, who's at Boreal. "Please consider implementing a mandated mask policy in Cook County. I was horrified driving downtown today, seeing very few tourists wearing masks. I no longer even feel comfortable heading into downtown area after what I witnessed this afternoon. Used to love Cook County summers and now I'm just sickened to see the lack of judgment of the tourists flocking into our county. Given the increasing case numbers across the United States, please consider making masks mandatory before we become the next hotspot." Thank you, Lisa. I have a letter from Chuck Patton, Peyton, who is the president of Odyssey Resorts. "Dear members of the Cook County Board, I must first disclose that I am not a resident of Cook County. I do, however, employ many people who are and whose health and well-being I deeply care about. Odyssey Resorts operates six resorts on or near the shore, including Caribou Highlands in Luton and East Bay Suites in Grand Marais. Between the six, we have more than 400 sleeping rooms and we welcome almost 250,000 people to the region in a normal year. Although this is anything but a normal year, I know we have all witnessed a strong resurgence of tourism over the last several weeks. I am dismayed that despite the great work and exhaustive planning by the Cook County Chamber and visit Cook County and private employers such as ourselves, far too many people are arriving at our destinations either unprepared or unwilling to wear face coverings when appropriate to do so, most notably while visiting our indoor public spaces. Our signage and general information provided to guests states that the expectation that they do so and that they do so while doing business and interacting in our home communities. We have also strengthened the language describing the required use of face coverings by our employees. While I completely support the efforts of our home communities to mandate the use of face coverings, we have seen with other issues that patchwork solutions are insufficient and difficult at best to enforce. For that reason, but primarily for the health and well-being of all who live and work in this region, I respectfully request that you encourage Governor Walz to mandate the use of face coverings throughout Minnesota when in indoor public spaces, in private businesses patronized by the public, and in any crowded outdoor space where distancing is not an option. Thank you for your leadership. Sincerely, Chuck Patton." Sean Parish at Northern Wilds. "Rena, I have been doing Northern Wilds distribution along the North Shore from Duluth to Grand Marais, stopping at many businesses. There is no uniformity in mask use. If we want to get through the pandemic as quickly and safely as possible, we need to be paddling in the same direction regarding safety and respect for one another. Requiring masks makes economic and social sense." Sean Parish. Mark Shackleton from Grand Marais Subway. "I'm in support of a statewide requirement to wear face masks indoors. If not statewide, then countywide." Betsy Bowen, we all know Betsy. "To the Cook County Board, I am in support of a broad mandate requiring face mask in public spaces. Masks are working well in my business and enable me, enabling me to say, to be open safely." Betsy Bowen, gallery owner. A letter from Lockport in Luton. "Lockport, we are in favor of protecting our visitors coming to our beautiful county, our hard-working staff, our community, and ourselves. We encourage the county and the state of Minnesota to initial, initialize a countywide mask requirement. Many visitors entering our business wear their mask, but many do not. And our local economy needs all of us to stay healthy, therefore we strongly support a mask ordinance." This is Deb Nemisto and Nancy Bradley, who are the owners of Lockport. "Dear Administrator Rogers, I'm a resident of Cook County and I'm writing to express my support for Cook County to support a mask-wearing requirement. Mask-wearing is a public health issue. It should not be a political one. As cases spike across the country, requiring that persons wear a mask is a simple way for us all, residents and visitors alike, to protect the health of our community." Beverly Belos. This is from Todd Miller, who owns properties, short-term rental properties. "Please consider creating a statewide position that mask be worn in all public buildings and in all private buildings where goods and services are provided to the public. Also, that masks be required in all crowded outdoor spaces where social distancing is not feasible." Let's see, this is from Karen Kobe. "I'm a Cook County resident that supports the idea of requiring masks to be worn in indoor situations in the public sector. Masks protect others and I truly believe that if we do not have the right to be free not to wear a mask covering, since the virus is threatening for everyone. Refusing to do so shows incredible selfishness and an unwillingness to protect and support our residents and visitors. I'm personally upset with folks who do not have this concern for the community as a whole. One does not have the right to drive drunk, ignore stop signs, or smoke in an enclosed space. It is a safety consideration, pure and simple. It is also just basic consideration of others." Ron Wannabeau says, "Everyone should wear masks. The governor will not make it mandatory. The city council should require masks." This is from John Barton, out in Hovland. Here are my thoughts. Jim Boyd suggests that the chamber members send your thoughts on establishing a statewide mask requirement, asking the county board to petition Governor Walz to establish such requirement. Jim's email said, "We also should mention that our emphasis is pushing for uniform mask rules is to use the moral and political authority of the state to encourage mask use, not to focus on enforcing their use and imposing penalties for those who decline. However, the email repeatedly uses the words impose, mandate, rule, and requirement, very strong words, that have strength derived from consequences as well as moral and political positions. The national debate on this issue frequently includes questions about the legal authority of governmental bodies that impose such mandates, rules, and requirements. It is evident that it is part of the American character to take strong issue with government-imposed restrictions without due process. Mandates, rules, and enforceable requirements resulting from the complete legislative process, including appeal, have the best chance of being effective. Without that process, imposing mandates, rules, and requirements add heat to the debate. My thought is that using strong encouraging language expressing a politically ecumenical desire for cooperation would be cooler, less heat, and have some likelihood of success. Imposing mandates, rules, and requirements without enforcement mechanisms and intent to enforce seems to me to be looking for failure. Executive fiat does not have the force of law, although it is tried all the time. And depending on the issue, it is often inflammatory. We should consult the county attorney for a legal opinion." As far as strong support from local folks and businesses, I think many would say that exists, but my observation is that many local people and some businesses do not follow current suggestions all the time. I also think there is little appetite for enforcing the rules that exist, especially if there be, may be confrontation involved. Official government enforcement of governmental imposed mandates, rules, and requirements would require a fairly good-sized force. We don't have many deputies. I'm in favor of masks and social distancing and I want to see wide voluntary compliance. I think that many residents and visitors in Cook County would likely feel safer if everyone wore masks inside businesses where distancing cannot be maintained and in crowded outdoor settings. However, I think the psychology of imposed but perhaps unenforceable mandates, rules, and requirements is wrong. It is not likely to be very effective, may have unintended consequences, and may be unlawful." John Barton. Letter from Robin Penner in Hovland. "Rena, I don't even know why you are asking for input. You all know that the city of Grand Marais, the county of Cook, and the state of Minnesota should have universal mask requirements in place already. This is a public health emergency. Our opinion is irrelevant. But since you ask, all caps, hell yes, and enforce it. If someone, if people were smoking in stores, running about town without pants, punching store owners or pedestrians, or driving on the wrong side of the street, there would be none of the silly arguments we're having about masks. We would expect safety rules and the rules to be enforced, whatever it took. It's your job. There is no debate here. Universal masking is currently our only tool to control this disaster. My family and friends are afraid to come to town anymore. All it took for me is one visitor pushing past me and screaming in my face that I'm a sheep for wearing a mask as I waited to enter Bucks over a month ago. I've even heard multiple visitors say they're disgusted and afraid of people in town and their behavior, that they came here because they thought we were rational and safe, and that they won't be visiting the North Shore again. As a resident, I'm thankful for Johnson's Grocery. If their curbside system weren't available to us, I would have no access to fresh food. This is a public health emergency. The government of the county is behaving selfishly and will undoubtedly pay the political price. I hope the governor, the county commission, and the city council take a different route." I misread that. "The government of this country is behaving selfishly and will undoubtedly pay the price. I hope the governor, the county commission, and the city council take a different route. It's almost too late to protect us, but at least you can try. Don't wait till we have to use the curling rink as an overflow morgue. Please implement local masking ordinances immediately and enforce them and encourage the governor to implement masking statewide. Thanks for asking for my opinion, but you don't need it. There's a question, what, there is no question what the right thing is. You all know it. And we will remember whether or not you showed leadership, intelligence, and decency during this crisis." Another letter from somebody named Roger Barton. "I don't support the idea of a citywide or countywide mask requirement two reasons. I believe mask-wearing should be encouraged as a personal responsibility, and I believe the government focus on masks will distract from the other anti-COVID measures: staying home when you're sick, washing your hands, and keeping six-foot distance. I'm part of a group of volunteers who have been encouraging mask use in front of Grand Marais stores. We have now logged nearly 50 hours in the effort over three weeks. We have seen mask use improve over that time, up nearly 90%. I believe our effectiveness, however, is not increasing, is not on increasing percent of mask use, but rather by maintaining public awareness and diligence over social distancing. Many times I've heard comments made to volunteers and to staff members in stores, 'Thanks for keeping us safe.' Perhaps instead of mask-wearing as use, a binding requirement enforceable by our sheriff, we, the county, should put our efforts toward expanding public outreach. Let's increase our core volunteers in the streets through the county and in Grand Portage. Let this be a county-sanctioned effort, much like the county organized volunteers in the grocery stores back in April. Let's show our visitors and county residents that it's an organized effort with grassroots support." Maybe it's corny, but I'd like people to see volunteers walking around in vests that say neighborhood health. I'm not a sheriff. I don't work for County, Cook County Public Health, but I care about neighborhood health. Regards, Roger Barton." This is from Jorge Gomez. He says, "Mandatory masks are a critical predicate conditioning us to accept abuses of our liberty. Mandatory masking provides the foundation on which governments continue to justify emergency measures and rule by executive fiat. And it creates a national mood of consent that America will accept indefinite government expansion because we face a new normal. Masking doesn't make us safer, it makes us weak, not only as a delay to our immunity, but as few, as, as free people. It's time, people, stand up for rights in our country. Our liberty and survival are at stake. I'm praying for God's blessing on our nation, but God also gave us the ability to think for ourselves." Mary Fellows says, "Dear Ms. Rogers, I live in Cook County. We here in Cook County are particularly vulnerable due to limited healthcare facilities and the average age of our residents. We're made even more vulnerable by all the visitors to the county. It's imperative that we have the ability to enforce a mask requirement when people are indoors or at a crowded area outdoors. Merchants should not have to be the enforcers of this health requirement." Thank you, Mary Fellows. Shelley Strom and Steve Boda say, "We support this concept and believe it should be implemented statewide, and the subject is statewide mask mandate." Let's see. Jennifer Schultz, Grand Marais. "I am a public health nurse with over 30 years of experience. I'm writing to request the city of Grand Marais enact an ordinance that require the wearing of face coverings for the nose, mouth, and chin in all public areas, whether indoors or out. This is a public health safety measure that has nothing to do with politics. Viruses do not care about politics. Science has proven that face coverings help reduce transmission of this virus. Other cities have enacted this policy. What are you waiting for? I would also like to request that Governor Walz enact a statewide mask ordinance for the same reasons as above. A statewide policy would remove the politics from every political place where people are exposed to the virus and protect everyone equally. Our current situation, where towns and cities and businesses are left to decide on their own, creates a patchwork of confusing messages to the public and requires individuals to be enforcers. Let's reduce one more COVID stressor by making policy uniform." I need a drink. Just taking a second here. It's a lot of reading. Okay. A letter from Jeff Gekas of the Gunpoint Tavern. "Hi Rena, we are really glad the city is considering a mask ordinance. We have implemented a mandatory mask rule at Gunpoint Tavern and our experience with this has been mixed. Most people are not wearing masks when they come into the tavern. We simply supply masks for those who don't have them handy. The majority are happy to put them on and are glad that we have the policy in place and are looking out for their safety. Others are downright honorary about it, some even swearing, 'How am I supposed to drink my effing beer with a mask on?'" It is difficult to respond nicely to those people, although we do. We tell them it's for our, the safety of our staff and for other patrons as well, and please wear them while walking to the bar or bathroom, but take, take them off at the table to eat. A lot of parties leave to go somewhere else that does not have the same policy, or they are angry while having their meal. As we all know, repeat business is a major part of our income and any negativity will reflect upon future decisions to come back to that business. It also seems that the majority of the ones who are against the policy are not our frequent visitors. We believe a county or citywide policy will alleviate any disregard, reluctance, or resistance to mask-wearing in individual business, along with helping to control the spread of the virus. A statewide policy would be ideal and would help us keep this virus at a minimum. Thank you so much for working on this and we are thankful for this endeavor." Jeff Susan and the entire staff at the Gunpoint Tavern. Brian Hansel writes, "Hi Rena, I heard you were taking comments on the potential of a mask requirement in the city of Grand Marais to pass along to the city. I think people don't know where I work. I support that proposal. I also support a countywide mandate, at the exception of allowing the tribal government to set their own mandate in their own nation." Stephanie Radloff, I think Grand Marais. "Good afternoon, Rena. I wanted to reach out after I read the letter on Boreal about asking for statewide mask requirement. I wanted to let you know that I am not in favor of making mask-wearing a requirement. As a mother of two young children, I've tried to have them keep a mask on. It's not a very easy feat. Making this a requirement for adults is one thing, but for small kids, simply would not be feasible. I also believe that it should be up to the individual businesses to decide if they want to have a mask requirement for their establishment. If it were a requirement, who would be the ones to enforce this? Hope this email finds you well. Thanks, Stephanie." Jennifer Stoltz from Cook County Co-op. "Dear Cook County Board of Commissioners, I believe that the residents and visitors in Cook County would be safer if everyone were required to wear face coverings inside all businesses, public buildings, and in crowded outdoor settings. When I talked to staff about reopening the Cook County Whole Foods Co-op to shoppers, I initially suggested that we recommend that shoppers wear face coverings. I received great opposition to opening the store unless everyone allowed in the co-op was wearing a face covering. To keep staff and co-op shoppers safe, we now require face coverings to shop or work at the Cook County Whole Foods Co-op. Many people are happy to wear face coverings, but we receive daily pushback from potential customers unhappy with our COVID-19 rules. Please petition Governor Tim Walz for a statewide face covering requirement. If customers knew that it was a requirement to cover their face everywhere in Minnesota, it would make our job of enforcing our face covering policy so much easier. I would also feel safer when traveling and shopping throughout Cook County and Minnesota." Rick and Peggy Anderson. "It is our opinion that the science does not support that the wearing of mask is a safeguard to catching COVID-19. It is only, it is like only wearing a pair of pants during mosquito season and wondering why you're getting bit on your arms. If you think masks work, then wear one. I should not have to if your mask is working." Kevin Thompson says, "Hi Rena, I'm in favor of requiring masks in all indoor, commercial, and public sites and crowded outdoor situations. This should stay in place until Fauci or his equivalent says to cease doing so." Marcy McIntyre. "Yes, I believe masks should be required to be worn in public to protect the health of our community. The cloth masks that are available to us do in fact provide some degree of protection. The mask requirement would save a lot of lives and would be celebrated as being responsible and intelligent citizens. However, the masks are not 100% effective. We would all have to wear the N95 mask in order to achieve 100% effectiveness, according to Dr. Michael Osterholm. Currently, the N95 masks are not widely available to us. I have been waiting for production of N95 masks to be increased in the United States. The American firms have somehow stepped up to provide the PPE, have not stepped up to provide PPE like the Canadian firms have done, recently reported in the Canadian media. So until we have N95 mask available that can be purchased at a reasonable cost, instead of price gouging $5 a mask currently in effect, we will have to wear the next best thing, which are the masks we saw at home. The public health directive should not be politicized. The virus does not attack people based on political affiliation, nor does the virus have any clue about First Amendment rights. All the virus wants to do is survive, replicate itself, and mutate. We should be more interested in surviving ourselves instead of letting this virus win. Consequently, the virus is responsible for numerous, extremely painful deaths worldwide. Cook County people are cognizant of the harm done by the 1918 flu, in which entire families met their deaths locally. We do not want to repeat the tragic mistakes of the past. Instead, we want to live out our lifespan in a manner that is rewarding and fulfilling. We can pursue this goal according to the pursuit of happiness mentioned in the United States Constitution. Don't you think it would be better to look funny in a mask than die a horrible death? I should think you would agree that this is the best of all possible worlds." Dennis Rizdal from Bluefin Bay says, "Hello Rena, I do support making face coverings mandatory for people entering interior public spaces, including all places of business, as well as outside when six feet of minimal social distancing is either not practical or not being practiced. I would appreciate it if you would bring these sentiments to the county board of commission." Dennis Rizdal. Amanda Weberg. "As a city resident, I support a petition to Governor Walz asking for mandatory masks in public and crowded places." Eric Arnold says, "I just want to express my thoughts on a statewide mask. I am not in favor of requiring people to wear masks. They choose not to. In my personal sightings, when out in public, I see numerous people who don't even wear the mask correctly anyways. They have them below their noses, only cover their mouths, which isn't protecting the people they come in contact with, let alone themselves. Also, the masks have gaps by their cheeks, inside their mouth, which in return is giving less protection. To me, it is giving people a false sense of security. People just need to maintain their distance from one another. If people are afraid of coming in contact with people without masks, they just need to shop without masks. They need to shop at the local businesses that are required in their stores. But then again, I haven't found a store yet that all employees wear their mask correctly, i.e. below their nose, or people just need to stay home if they don't feel safe enough. Why punish people that want to go about and try to live somewhat normal life? If you want, if you even want to try and call this normal with all the rules already set in place? Give people a choice. Thank you for your time, Eric Arnold." Peggy and Rick Peggy and Rick Anderson. I strongly oppose mandatory mask requirements implemented in Cook County, which businesses has the right to require a mask for entry in their store, and each individual has the option to refuse patronizing a store if they choose. Stop playing local politics with this mask issue. Americans have the freedom to choose. Peggy Anderson from Schroder, Minnesota. Let's see, I apparently printed that one twice. Good morning, I have just replied, I'm just replying to Jim Boyd's request for information about implementing countywide mask requirement. As an individual, I've spoken to quite a few people about a mask ordinance without letting them know my opinion. I haven't spoken to anyone who are in favor of it. I don't know how it works in a brewery. I don't know how it works in a brewer when you constantly want to take a sip of beer, as I find myself struggling with getting enough water while working due to the mask being on. Not speaking for the business, but personally, I wouldn't want to see an ordinance. As a business owner, I wouldn't want to have to enforce a mask ordinance either. That was sent by Sue Prom. Jeff Nimitz. If anyone were to ask me why I wear one, you're either part of the solution or you're part of the problem. Sandra Stevens says, Cook County Board, please petition Governor Walz for statewide mask requirement. We will all be safer with one. I would lessen the tensions among businesses and customers, locals and visitors, but also families and friends with disparate views. We appreciate the guidance to date, but need a firm policy in place to get through this. Without consistent mask-wearing and other hygienic practices in place, we'll continue to hunker down at our residents and limit our spending within the community by default. This isn't good for us or local businesses. Thank you for your time. Steven Serba of Cascade Vacation Rentals. Steven Serba wholeheartedly supports the statewide mask mandate. It's an effective strategy and not hard to accomplish. Please do not, please do what you can to encourage a statewide mandate. Lori Oswald from Graham Ray says, Dear Rena, per the boreal article tonight regarding a petition for the state for mask requirements, I would ask that you please do so. It's alarming to see so many people visiting and living in our community who choose not to practice established safety practices during this pandemic. I would ask that all businesses require a mask to enter, that all businesses require masks of employees, and that there be some requirements that can be enforced in crowded spaces. It is my understanding, perhaps rumor, that there will be a festival soon at Stone Harbor, live music, et cetera. Will masks be required at this event? I have great concerns about the possibility that this will be another public event that is not safe for our community. Thank you for your support during these times. John Hanson from the Gunflint Trail says, Hello Rena, there should not be a state mandate to wear masks. People can use common sense in this matter. Please do not support Tim Walz and his overreach of power. Virginia Hahn says, I support a statewide face mask policy requiring all people in Minnesota to wear face masks in indoor public spaces and outside where they cannot socially distance. Thank you for your concern and the protection of all Minnesotans. Barb and John Botger, Botger? Botger? Botger, I guess, from the Gunflint Trail say, Hi Rena, we wholeheartedly-
Botger.
Pardon me? What? Heidi, how do I s-
Botker.
Botker, thank you. I've been reading for a while here, so. Botger. We wholeheartedly support the statewide requirement for masks. It is one proven method for slowing down the transmission of COVID-19. We believe residents and visitors in Cook County would be safer if everyone were required to wear masks, cite all businesses in crowded outdoor settings. We request that Cook County Board to petition Governor Tim Walz for statewide mask requirement. Please add our name to your report in the Commissioners on Tuesday. Suzanne Davies. I've written my county commissioner, we support a countywide mask ordinance in public places. Also, please refresh restaurants on the CDC guidelines for cleaning after patrons leave. We were at Sister's Place patio dining and zero cleaning was done after patrons left their table. No chairs were wiped, nor the condiments they used. We won't be eating there again, curbside only for us, from Sister's Place. Suzanne and John Davies. From Lutzen. Leah Thomas, Graham Ray says, I support a statewide mask requirement. Yapha Nappendinsky says, in response to, in response to the request for feedback regarding requiring masks gained statewide and to encourage or require masking locally, my opinion is an emphatic yes. We are currently keeping my 90-year-old mother safe at home, which requires us to be safe when we pick up mail or groceries. A uniform masking policy would help us all be safer. David Mills forwarded one to me from Daniel Riddle. He says, David, in our corner of Graham Ray and Cook County, Mel and I do not see the need to add the already complex nature of things as they are. COVID-19 and the state orders, border closing, reduction in seating, loss of the J1 program, road project in town. Customers that have come to the Blue Water have been very happy in the way that we as a community are addressing the issues listed above. Just to know for your thinking. Bob Shannon writes, Dear Ms. Rogers, thank you for being willing to read my statement to the Commissioners. Tomorrow's meeting, I'm requesting that the County Board of Commissioners work together to institute mandatory masking in all public and indoor and outdoor spaces where social distancing between people is not possible. Minnesota's stay-at-home order contained the spread of the virus while testing and systems were developed and deployed. And while we may be in a better place than we were four months ago, if we let go of the reins too quickly, we risk losing the control for which we paid dearly. Minnesota Department of Health testing over the last three weeks shows persistent and significant increases in new COVID-19 infections. At the beginning of this month, the Commissioner of the Department of Health stated that the use of face masks should be mandated in public. The government and legislature have not taken action. Cook County may not have had many cases yet. It is our enviable position to live in a place where visitors come looking for peace and quiet and minimal risk of contracting COVID-19. Unfortunately, a few folks resist and refuse to heed recommendations to wear masks. This places us all at substantial risk. Let's take a lesson from several states that have been the most reticent to implement controls before it is too late. Please don't wait before we mandate use of masks. Don't kick the can to St. Paul hoping that they will prompt action. Instead, please act today to set a positive example for the state of Minnesota. Please act decisively and proactively and mandate the use of masks in public. Thank you for your consideration. I think I have like two more, Myron, so I'm closing in on-
Okay, go ahead.
This is from Elise Kilo, who works at North House. After months of being cooped up and isolated, every woman loved to return to life as normal, where hugging says hello and standing close expresses interest. Sadly, it's a fact that we are not back to normal. Despite how busy the world has become, I would love to have the Governor declare mask-wearing a requirement in all indoor spaces and in congested outdoor spaces. Without this becoming a mandate from above, it seems many people are too lazy or unwilling to wear masks. I believe our new normal means learning to live with safe distancing and wearing masks in public. Just seems like common courtesy to wear a mask while meeting someone serving you and may not have a choice. Sometimes, we must be less than comfortable as we work towards the good health of all. Peace, Elise. And last, Kim Wolf from Timber Wolf Realty says, Rena, we support the wearing of masks in public indoor spaces such as businesses. We support mask-wearing in crowded outdoor spaces. We must take whatever actions we can to protect the vulnerable folks in our community until this health crisis is resolved. And that concludes public comments for this morning.
Well, thank you very much. And thanks to all those people that submitted their thoughts on a very important topic. With that, we'll go to consent agenda items. I would just like to comment as Board Chair, I'd really like to thank Administrator Rogers and our Human Resources Director, as well as all of those that have really been highly successful in selecting and recommending in our consent agenda the hiring of two key positions, very important positions in our Highway Department. That's a major achievement, and it should be recognized, and I'm sure I speak for the other Commissioners in that regard. With that, would any of the Commissioners want to pull any consent agenda item for further discussion?
This is Commissioner DuKirk.
Yes.
I have one item. It doesn't need to be pulled, but Item J for election judges in the second column, third one down, it is Dwayne Hasagawa, not Dwayne Haswiga. Just a note for the record that that spelling is way off.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
This is Commissioner Mills, I move to approve the consent agenda, over.
Okay, does some Commissioner have support?
Starley supports.
Okay, Commissioner Starley. The vote, call a vote. Commissioner Starley.
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye, over.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Aye.
Mr. Bursham's aye. Very good, passive. We'll go to Emergency Operations Command update. Grace Trenager, would you like to start as usual?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you again. Yep, some special thanks to you, as always, for just the wonderful job that you're doing. And I listen to your reports to the public, and they're very effective, very thoughtful.
Well, thank you. She is all of the Commissioners' support. It's definitely been a busy time for public health. So, I did go ahead and send a copy of my notes from the EOC to all of you, and then I'll go ahead and give those as well. So, the last time I gave an update was June 23rd, and since that time, the COVID-19 case count for Minnesota has risen by 9,545, with the two-week trend of new cases moving upwards through the state. And that measure of the trend over a two-week period is one way that public health can continue to measure what is happening with the pandemic in our state. So rather than giving the case count, I think that is how I'm going to be reporting from here on, if that's all right with the Board. And feel free, if you have any feedback on how I report on the cases, to just go ahead and email me, and I'm happy to change that if at your request. So, I'll give updates from the last three weeks from the EOC. So Kristin Diavuta-Worten, in her new role as the Public Health Educator, created a Frequently Asked Questions document, which I linked to in the notes. It's a document that public health will continue to update regularly with the types of questions and answers that we've been engaging with from our local business partners. And we've circulated that link with the support of Jim Boyd and other business leaders in the community. So, our hope is that it can be a reference for businesses as questions come up, and a way for them to link back to us when they have questions or concerns. We did have our second positive case locally on July 2nd. Though the case is not included in our Cook County case count, it went to the individual's county of residence. We developed with that second positive case at North Shore Health and piloted our case investigation and contact tracing workflow that's based here within our local public health system. This is a collaboration locally between Public Health and Human Services, North Shore Health, Satu's Mountain Clinic, and Grand Portage Health Services. It also has a regional component that involves backup through our community health board, and at a state level is in line with the Minnesota Department of Health workflow. So I'm very pleased with the way that that workflow has developed. I think we have a strong local system with lots of good connections, and that this is going to be a key piece of our response going forward. Kristin also went on WTIP to talk about this case investigation and contact tracing process. I know that interview is up on their website, and it's very informative. I didn't link to it, but I would highly recommend having a listen if you're interested in learning the specifics of how this works. I also continue to go on the radio every Monday morning at 7:40. We are continuing to partner with North Shore Health to support their planning efforts related to the Care Center, specifically right now with regards to point prevalence testing and outdoor visitation. Elsa Lundee, our Emeracore Emergency Response Initiative service member, is collaborating with AEOA and the Grand Murray Food Bank to organize a free food distribution event, which is happening on Wednesday here in Grand Murray. It is also happening on Wednesday in Finland and Grand Portage. We are in the public health, well, in Public Health and Human Services, both Allison McIntyre and myself are participating on the CARES Act task force that Rena has put together. From the public health perspective, we're looking at how we can use CARES Act funding to support public health response efforts, specifically in the category of increased education and outreach, essential service provision, and additional capacity in case investigation and contact tracing, as well as subgrants to community agencies for COVID-19-related initiatives. So more to come on that, but those are sort of the categories that I'm looking at from a public health perspective. Within public health, we've conducted three business site visits to date, with two more scheduled for later this week. The process includes business funding us, their preparedness plan, representatives from public health going onsite at the business, answering questions from the business owner. We usually ask them to identify two or three areas of their business operations they'd like to talk over from a COVID-planning lens. Then we follow up with written feedback and a call about a week later to see how things are going and whether they've improved since our visit. So next week, now that we've kind of gone through the pilot stage and got all our materials together and our workflow together, we're planning to put out a media release to publicize this offering so that more businesses can set up times to meet with us if they're interested. We put a testing dashboard on the hub site that includes our case count information and testing information, both from MDH and also from the North Shore Health lab. I am beginning to work pretty closely with our local schools regarding fall plans. We are waiting for more guidance to come out from the Department of Health on July 27. Allison McIntyre is convening a mask messaging group to bring together a diverse group of community members to brainstorm strategies to improve education and outreach related to mask-wearing, with the goal of increasing how consistently and effectively mask-wearing happens in our community. And this effort has grown alongside conversations and requests regarding local ordinances or resolutions related to wearing a mask in public spaces where it's difficult to socially distance. On the volunteer portion of our EOC, our volunteers have served 4,169 hours to date. Andrea Orist, in her role as volunteer coordinator for the EOC, is working on creating Minnesota Response T-shirts for our volunteers that can identify them if they're on volunteer assignments, and also act as a thank you for our volunteers' service. And also in conversation with Molly Higgins and Brady Powers to talk through safety planning for the upcoming elections. And we are considering putting out another call for donations for a slightly different type of face mask that has a clear window, because we've become aware that people who are deaf or hard of hearing struggle with the face masks because they're not able to lip read. So, we're trying to think creatively about ways we can address that for those members of our community who are struggling with the issue. Those are all my updates for today.
Thank you. And also thanks to you, Mike Keeford, for your role. I hope that you're with us this morning for an update.
Mike is here in the Commissioners' room, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, community members, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I just have a few things on the emergency management side of things. All right, I just have a few things on the emergency management side of things. Typically, in a, in a normal year, we, emergency managers in the state of Minnesota hold two conferences. One is put on by the Association of Minnesota Emergency Managers, which is typically held in September. And that is, that was canceled. And the second one is the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management, which is typically held in February. They are, the state of Minnesota is already considering canceling the February conference. And it, and it just brings to the attention of what conferences may look like for, for the upcoming year, for not only emergency management, but many other things. One of the big discussions with, with our conferences is that what goes along with those conferences is a lot of training for emergency managers to include the getting emergency managers state certified. A lot of these trainings is, are difficult to do virtually, so a lot of discussion in the upcoming year of what, what training is going to look like for emergency managers. We do continue to meet with the state, although we did reduce the state meetings to once a week. I, I do however get a daily report from the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, COVID-related. Our region continues to meet just once a week now. The EOC remains in operation, as it, as it has been. We have reduced our, our daily briefings down to briefings on just Tuesdays and Thursdays. These briefings and our state meetings and regional meetings are, are very scalable. If, if things happen where we need to meet more often, then we will. And if, and if things mellow out here, we'll, we'll be meeting less. So, that's how that's going. I don't know, I'm, I'm sure some other folks out there get the, the Michigan Extreme Alerts. It's a, it's a tone comes across your cell phone, one came out yesterday. It's a, it's a very different tone. It gets your attention, and it's different than the emergency alert system or an Amber Alert, but. Anyway, the, the alert yesterday afternoon was an executive order that Michigan did put in place, a statewide order for mask, for the wearing of masks. And they put right in there, I didn't read the whole order, but they did put right in there, that they're putting it kind of on the businesses to either not allow entry if you do not have a mask on, or refuse service in, in businesses. So, that puts a lot of pressure on businesses, for sure. I would share something that I learned yesterday. I have connections down in the Beaver Bay area. Fairly long-term business owner down there has kind of reported to me that she said, this has nothing to do with masks. She just reported that it's, it just seems like we're getting a different type of people up on the North Shore. Maybe because they, they can't go other places, but it's not the Minnesota nice type, type people. They're, they're just, they're just unfriendly and, and, and she's, she found it very disconcerning, which, which it is. We're not used to that up here. Let's see. Lastly, on the plus side of things, with, with our recent very nice gentle rains we've had here on the, in Cook County, that it makes myself and our wildland firefighters breathe a little easier. And that's what I have for you folks today.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll just do a roll call if there's any questions or comments that you have for either Grace or Mike. We'll start with Commissioner Starley.
Thank you. I was just trying to take all this in from what Mike said about what Michigan has done, and then also a different sort of visitors here. I haven't noticed it a whole lot, but I have seen a different attitude. Yeah, I guess I would agree with that, what I've seen here in the West End. I would agree with that. Thank you, Mike, for that.
Okay. Commissioner DeShaw?
Yeah, I have a question for Grace. She said 9,545 cases up there. Where are the majority of them cases coming from, which part of the state?
You know, the cases are still concentrated in the metro with additional outbreaks happening in jails, correctional facilities, and occasionally also in manufacturing plants.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner DuKirk?
Hi, Mike and Grace, thank you for your update. And Mike, thank you always for something positive during the conversation. During public comment, the feelings of the citizens and the comments made, it's not altruists, it's locals. There's locals that refuse to wear masks and follow rules and not go into businesses. And I don't necessarily know that it's a different flavor of people. What we are experiencing is something we've never experienced before. We are all under pressure, we are all under stress. We can see the toll on our public health and human services. We know that this is creating more needs for mental health services, and so I just ask that everyone remember that we're all human, and that we all have our own struggles. And I'm just tired of the labeling and of the calling out and of the harmful things that we say, even though that is not what we intend to do. These are tough times. These are tough decisions that we all have to make. And when you live in a community where there's only one confirmed local case and one case of a seasonal visitor, it's really hard for some people to wrap their head around that the pandemic exists and that affects people in other areas. So, as I've said numerous times over the last couple of months, try to remember to be kind, and remember that we all have our own struggle. Over.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Grace, for the updates. Really helps give me perspective, just regionally, what's going on, as well as locally with our, with, what's happening in, in public health locally. I don't have any questions at this time. I too am a little relieved with the, with the rain, it feels really good. I noticed that the Forest Service lifted the fire danger so that campfires are allowed still, and I hope everyone can be safe and responsible, and as Commissioner DuKirk said, kind and patient. Over.
Good words to live by, yes. I don't have any questions, but just commend you both for your work, and I appreciate your reports and, and your work. Very important at this time, and at all times. We will go to the next item, this maintenance. Is Brian going to be presenting this estimate for the blind? Or are you Administrator Rogers?
Mr. Chair, I, I am going to do that for Brian this morning. So, this request is replacing the blinds in the courthouse after our recent update of windows here. These windows are a different size, and so the blinds that we had don't work. So, it's, the request is to, to purchase 54 blinds to replace those for the windows in the courthouse. And this funding, I think, will largely come out of the equipment bond funds, or not equipment bond, the CIP bonds, funds that were used to replace the windows. I think we have some additional monies there. I, I guess that's it. The Window Project, by the way, has been completed. We have a few short items on, on, on a punch list. They're waiting on a couple of parts, some screen adjustment things. So, as soon as those parts come in, they will come and finish it. But I think most people believe that this was a pretty successful project. So, the blinds is just, just really kind of the last part of it.
Okay. For this item, I'm just going to ask if any Commissioner has any questions or comments. Would you just please state your name, and then we'll call on you. Otherwise, if not, I would entertain a motion to go ahead with this person.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Go ahead.
I need to recuse myself completely from this conversation and voting. I am the bookkeeper for TenTen Interiors.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Starley?
Yes.
Well, I just, I just want to make a, a comment of the fact that the windows are smaller, and that's good. And I think they'll be, the replacement of the windows will be cost-effective in, in the future for heating bills. And aren't we lucky to have somebody in town who's able to do the blinds? Otherwise, we would be going down the road to Duluth, and who knows how much we would have to spend there. So, I appreciate the fact that we can do it local. Over.
Very good. Any other comments?
I, Mr. Chair, this is, this is Rena again. I just wanted to mention, I didn't mention it, that the, that the amount of the bid includes not only the purchase of the blinds, but the installation of them as well. So, I forgot to, forgot to mention that.
Thank you. For that clarification. Any other comments? If not, a motion?
Commissioner Starley? I make a motion to approve the purchase for 54 blinds to come out of our 2018 CIP bond funds, which also includes the installation. Over.
Very good. Do we have support?
Commissioner Mills, second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner DeShaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Versham's aye, passes. Okay, we'll go to Auditor Howard for the next agenda item, the A Canvas Board Meeting Date for Primary Election.
Mr. Chair, Board, the request is to set our Canvas Board date for August 14, Friday at 10:00 a.m. Typically, our Canvas Board is on a Thursday. What's allowable by state law is the second or third day after the primary. The reason to move it out to Friday is because of a, a court ruling recently. A little background, absentee ballots are generally, under law, accepted through 8:00 p.m. on election day. But through this court ruling, because of the pandemic, the court ruled that we must accept absentee ballots that are postmarked election day. Therefore, they will be coming in the days after election day. Typically, for the postal service, two or three or four days after, up here. So, by moving it out one day, we're able to accept more of the ballots that we're required to accept. But it is limited by our Canvas. So, we can accept them up to our Canvas date, and our Canvas date cannot be past Friday. So, that sets the limits of that, and this will allow us to count more of them. The downside is that we cannot report results of any precinct that is not complete. So, we will not be reporting the results of the primary on election night or the day following. It will be until, not until we finish counting all absentee ballots. This is statewide. It's an issue the Secretary of State is working on, trying to work with the state to, to get some kind of release to allow a partial result reporting. But we'll find out if that actually happens. So, so the request at this time is just to set the Canvas date for Friday, the 14th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Please state your name, Commissioner. Okay. Would entertain a motion then to set the date to Friday, August 14th, for the Canvas?
This is Commissioner Mills, I move to set the canvassing date to August 14th at 10:00 a.m. Over.
Okay.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Support, okay. Very good, thank you. Roll call vote. Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye, over.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Aye.
Mr. Versham's aye, passes. Okay, we'll go to authorized employment of a broker to sell property.
And Mr. Chair, so in February, the Board approved authorizing advertising for bids for sale of a five-acre parcel owned by the county. This is a, basically a trade we made over a revolving loan fund, loan, and so we own this property outright. State law says that we have to try to sell it on our own, publishing public notices. And we've done so three times in the local newspaper and once in a paper of general circulation, a Lake County paper. And now that that is all done, we've had no responses, no offers, no responses that I'm aware of, which now allows us to go to a real estate broker as the next step to try to sell this property. The broker cannot sell it for less than 90% of the appraised market value. This is under state statute. We're requesting that it be sold for higher, but this just gives you a parameter, could not be less than 90% of the appraised market value as determined by the county. The broker fee cannot exceed 10%. I'm not aware of any broker fees that even approach that here. So, just giving you the parameters. So, the request is that, based on the revolving loan funds committee recommendation, is that you authorize me to seek out a local broker to attempt to sell, sell the five acres.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Please state your name.
This is Commissioner DeShaw.
Commissioner Starley?
Oh, Commissioner Mills, I think was first.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Starley. And thank you, Auditor Powers. I'm just hopeful that, you know, I think we'll, we'll get a, a better outcome when it's, when it's advertised and, and sold by a professional. I think the county is going to be better off with this action. Over.
Thank you. Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Brady, how do you go about doing this? Do you put this out to all the realtors and then have them kind of compete for it? Or how does, what's the process? Over.
There's, there's nothing required in the statutes on this. It just says, we may sell it using a broker. The committee has talked, the revolving loan fund committee has talked about it. They have agreed on one to approach, they think would be good. And there's no, there's no real guidance in the statutes on that.
Okay?
It, it is a good, it is a good idea at this point because they have a much greater reach through their multiple listing sources than we do through newspapers and our online, you know, social media. So, the chances are much better getting a proposal. So the chances are much better getting a proposal.
Okay? Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion then to approve employing a real estate broker?
Hey, Myron, I got a question.
Excuse me, my, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. Commissioner DeShaw has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed, missed it. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner DeShaw.
Yeah, Brady, does the money for this land go back into the revolving loan fund or to the county?
That would be, that would be the intent. Because it's to the, the whole reason for making the arrangement is that we reduced the principal on one of our loans, which then short-staffed the fund. And so the intent is that this makes up for that. If we sell it for the appraised value or more.
Okay. Anything else? Would someone be willing to make a motion then to approve the employment of a real estate broker?
This is Commissioner Mills. I'll move to employ a real estate broker to sell the property with the intent of putting the money back into the revolving loan fund. Over.
Anyone willing to support that motion?
Starlee, support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Starlee, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Starlee?
Aye.
And Commissioner Versham's an aye. Passes. Thank you. I think for the loan for the construction of the fire hall, we've talked about this previously, and there's been information that's been sent out to the commissioners from the fire chief. So with this item, I would call on Auditor Powers to make a presentation, and then we'll, we'll have a discussion and take action.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the fire chief, Charlie Laboda, approached the county asking for a loan of $350,000 to $400,000 to build a new fire hall for the Holman Fire Department. And this would be driven primarily by the lack of space for current equipment, for training space, and safety concerns. They have two trucks right now that are drained and put into storage each winter, and otherwise sit outside in the summer months. And this would allow them to keep all their vehicles ready, not in storage, and to save the equipment, last longer. The loan could not cause any cash flow interest for the county under our current circumstances, given our fund balance. We would charge 1% under our current county policy for any loan for fire departments over $100,000. The fire department has checked. They're not aware of any federal loan funding for a project like this at this time. The, the fire department does not expect to increase their levy with this request based upon their, they have current loans, they have the levy that they already request each year, donations that they receive. They've analyzed it. To give you some background that I'm not sure of all of the board, we talked about in the leadership committee, but some history of our loan to fire departments. We had some large loans a few years ago. So the largest outstanding balance we've had for fire loans was $993,000. That was back in 2014. We had large loans to gun fire, fire department and Lucian Fire Department. Right now, at the end of 2019, our balance is down to about $500,000. This, if approved, this would get us back up close, but actually less than our previous high balance. So it's, it's not unusual from that standpoint. Mr. Laboda is, should be online now. Are you there, Charlie? I'll give him a chance to answer if he is there, just in case you have any additional questions. I know he was going to come on earlier in the meeting. So I could go through the list of questions and answers that we've given him, but I think I'll just stop at this point and see if the board has any questions.
Okay, we'll do a roll call on this one. So we'll start with Commissioner Starlee for any questions or comments. And do we have the fire chief with us? Charlie Laboda, are you with us? I guess he is not.
Okay, well, I guess, in his defense possibly, I told him I, I, I thought we might start around nine, and he may have been called away for some reason. I wasn't, I wasn't cognizant of all the public comments and how long that would take.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and see if we can take care of this, and we'll start with Commissioner Starlee. Any questions or comments? And if Charlie Laboda can join us, that's fine. But Auditor Powers, your responsibility, I guess, to try to answer everything you can or provide more information. As pertinent to the discussion, Commissioner Starlee, questions, comments?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a comment that I'm glad we're able to help them out. I know that we appreciated the help here in the West End for the new Lucian Fire Hall and so forth, and so I'm glad that our monies are available for another district to go ahead and, and update. Thank you. Over.
Okay. Commissioner Versham?
Um, I don't have no questions. I, me and Rena went out there and toured their fire hall this spring, and it's a much needed fire hall, so Holman's a growing area, and that's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Commissioner Mills. And I don't have any questions. I, I have in the past and, and have gotten some answers here. It's largely just about the history and, and the demographics, like number of, number of houses served and just who's going to be affected and impacted by this. And yeah, I think the need is, the need has been demonstrated, and, and I think it's, it's very important to, to give the East End the support that they need, especially for emergency situations. So I think they've made a good case, and, and it's much needed. I would support it. Over.
Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
I have no questions. And with that, motion to approve.
I would, oh, okay. That's all right. I was going to comment, but I won't. Okay, so we have a motion to approve. Is there support for that motion?
This is DeShaw, second.
Okay. Before the vote, I would just like to comment, I did visit the site with Commissioner DeShaw and have, have met with them, and really want to commend them for their efforts. They're having property in that area. I noticed that they really improved, you know, the fire department services and are really looking to the future and really want to support us to be part of that as a county wholeheartedly support this. And thanks to all what they do up there in that very remote area. So then we'll do a roll call vote on the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention one other reason for, just in a little detail. I thought Charlie would be here, but, because I thought it's important for all these fire districts. It's just, one thing it does is it allows for restroom and shower spaces, and they make the case that, and for gear wash and extractors, they need the proper sanitation spaces because of the chemicals. The encounter and fire tires are extremely hazardous, and they need to be able to clean themselves and their gear properly at the station so it doesn't become a hazard, they don't bring it home with them, et cetera. So they don't have that kind of ability right now. So that's just one more reason. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye.
Mr. Starlee?
Aye.
Mr. Versham's an aye. Very good. We'll go on to the Election CARES Grant.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is another CARES grant, so as you're aware by now, they've given out CARES money to different state agencies that then make it available. This is one that was made to the Secretary of State's office, which by formula, they give us this amount, which is $6,977.14, of which $1,199.37 could be allocated to the city if they chose to take on some election function for this election. But in any case, we need to talk with them about that and, and come to some agreement. Generally, we handle all of elections, so my expectation would be that they would say, "Thank you, just use it well." And what it can be used for is all the normal COVID-19. It's for anything with public outreach, health, safety issues for elections, including signage, additional staffing, which we will be doing at this election, additional judges, cost of increased absentee balloting, which is occurring. We've probably hit in the neighborhood of 300 absentee right now, which is way above norm. Increased training of local election officials, which will be starting soon, and so forth. So I don't think we'll have any problem spending the funds.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Auditor Powers on that? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve a resolution.
This is Commissioner Mills. I'll make the motion to approve the resolution to accept $6,977.14 of CARES grants.
Okay. Do we have someone that would support?
Starlee, support.
Okay, Commissioner Starlee, thank you. Roll call vote. Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye.
Commissioner Starlee?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner DeShaw?
Aye.
Mr. Versham? An aye. Very good. Passes. This time, we'll call for a break, and we'll, would 10 o'clock be enough time for everyone to reconvene from the break?
Um, sure.
Yep.
Okay, let's go ahead and, not recess, but take a break till 10 o'clock, and we'll all stay connected, and we'll start the meeting again for the administrative section.
How are you?
Not so far as I'm concerned. I think that I have to talk to the other caller. It's just people I, the person I talk to, I'm a virgin, which is a 40 degree.
Thank you. I appreciate that, yeah.
Do you think there's, you know, aside, some of my friends, you know, everyone can see how that sucks, because of all the duty?
I'm passing, who would want them right now? In college, people are, they're running to, they don't want signs in their yard.
Are you getting support?
Yeah, I guess, I think there's a group of it, doesn't see any public, there's a bunch of them. Mentality, so I run into that more.
Yeah, well, just keep it up. I, 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 I support whoever I come to, whatever I come to, so.
Good, that's what I mean.
Yeah. No, I know. But I, I, I do, you know, I support, I support you, you're talking to people, a whole now, people are big on, yeah.
And I think that's, so people forget, that would know what happened before.
And I, like, tell them they're good, and I go, I'm with you there, because I know all of them, you know?
So it's your check you gave me for your property taxes. I want to, do you have an issue?
Oh. He said, "We're just gonna have to start over."
Yeah.
I, I, he, he's discouraged, but the guy, all the love, kind of, I don't care.
Yeah.
And you're listening, I mean, look at all the fronts.
Right.
So I, I don't, I just, I don't have an answer.
Well, would, yeah, would you, I mean, you got a permit in this fire, you're gonna have to reapply it. But I guess if you got other conflicts and stuff, you know, that you're just gonna figure out physically whether you can do it, you know? I mean, that's what I think.
I don't know, I mean, I, I don't think it works, I suppose, because this thing wasn't, or there.
I said, try to get one down the throat or anything like that.
Oh, I wonder, I, I.
That's just a bad location.
I, I wondered, I, he was talking to me about it.
Yeah.
I said, I feel wrong, but I, yeah.
I mean, I mean, really, really, in, in one year, when you request to not be tested, it would be easier. You're in trouble, you're in trouble. But, so, I'm, I'm, can you ever follow?
Well, some days I'm really done with this job. And some days I think, oh, that sounds so bad.
Thank you.
I think the truth is, I'm gonna miss it. I'm gonna miss being on the inside of stuff. I'm gonna miss being on the inside of stuff.
Okay, um, gonna do a check in here to see if we got everyone. Uh, Commissioner Starley?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Mills?
Commissioner Mills is here.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Here.
Commissioner Dushaw?
Here.
Okay. We'll go to our administrator's section, uh, first part, August, your meeting schedule. Request to change to August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, regular school board, regular board of commissioners meeting to August fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, commissioners. Um, so, as you know, uh, we have a primary election that's scheduled on Tuesday, August eleventh. And the place where that, uh, is scheduled and is set up many, many months in advance is, uh, for the east side of Grammeray, grease, east side of Grammeray is in the commissioner's room, where we, uh, also schedule our commissioner meetings. Um, it's not really feasible for us to move that to the ITV room, even though there's only a couple of us here for that meeting live, because we don't have live streaming capabilities. And, um, I think it, and generally, it's a little restricted to the public, and there's not room there right now for social distancing. So, um, instead of trying to figure that out, it's just easier to ask if we can meet the first Tuesday for our commissioner meeting rather, uh, on the fourth, rather than on August eleventh. So that's the, actually, the request. It just changed our first August meeting from August eleventh to August fourth.
Okay, any questions on that? Please state your name. Um, now I entertain a motion to change the date to August fourth for a regular scheduled August eleventh meeting.
This is Commissioner Mills. I'll move to change the date to August fourth instead of our regular August eleventh meeting.
Okay, support?
Starley, support.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, Commissioner Dushaw?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bursham is aye, passes. Set closed meeting to discuss contract negotiations, um...
So...
To set, uh, closed meeting after the committee of the whole meeting on July twenty-first to discuss, discuss contract negotiation. Go ahead.
Um, I guess I don't have much more to say about that, but I, I feel like we have a need, um, to have some more conversation among the board. And we're allowed to do that in a closed meeting when it, uh, when it involves contract negotiation strategies. Um, so, uh, the next available time for us to do that, uh, the board, the board needs to approve the setting of that meeting in the next available time for us to do that is, um, July twenty-first at the conclusion of our committee of the whole meeting. So...
Okay. Any questions or comments? State your name, please. Okay, entertain a motion to, uh, set a closed meeting after the committee of the whole on July twenty-first.
Commissioner Mills, so move, over.
Okay, uh, do we have support?
Starley, support.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Commissioner Mills?
Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Dushaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills is aye. Very good. We'll go to employee contract negotiation commissioner assignment. Uh, recommendation to assign Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Starley to employee contract negotiation team. The reason for that is worth a discussion, and it was recommended that we have commissioners assigned to this that are not up for election. And so, um, that would be a change from you being on that committee. Previously, so any questions or comments, uh? Administrator Rogers, do you have anything else to add to that?
Um, no, I think we always have, as part of our, um, negotiation, um, team, we have two commissioners assigned, and generally, that is the board chair and the vice chair. Um, but given, um, the, that we have a couple of positions up for reelection or in a replacement, um, that are up for election or, or a replacement of, of Commissioner Dushaw's seat, that it makes sense to, um, maybe make a slight change, um, to make sure that the two commissioners who aren't up for election, the two districts represented that aren't up for collection, election, um, be the ones on this team, because, uh, sometimes negotiations do go beyond years' end. We hope they don't, but in case they do.
Any questions or comments?
Commissioner DuKirk?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner DuKirk.
Um, I would like us to table this, since we have now just set a closed meeting to discuss it, because we have been having a discussion about whether or not there will be commissioners involved in contract negotiations. And just a note for the record, it is not traditionally the chair and vice chair. Um, I've been on it almost every, well, no, I've been on it every single time since the day I was elected, and I've not been the chair for the last seven years, or vice chair for the last seven years. So, um, again, my recommendation is to table it until after we have our closed meeting and we decide exactly how we are gonna have these negotiations. Over.
Okay. Any, uh, comments or response to that, uh, recommendation for tabling?
Uh, this is Commissioner Mills.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner DuKirk, for, for bringing, bringing this up. Um, um, I guess, um, just kind of the, just some of the discussion we've had previously, um, there's still, regardless of the format we, we pick, there's still the quote-unquote "team." And, um, and I think that's what this committee assignment is about. Um, regardless of, of the, the approach we take, we're still gonna have this team. And so, we need to, and, and of course, everything eventually will be coming for the whole board, but for the, you know, to not have a quorum and to have the team, um, meet as needed, we just have two commissioners. And so, we still need to form this, and just from our previous discussions, um, it was my understanding that this was the, um, Commissioner Starley and myself, um, not being up for election, this was the approach we, we'd like for the team regardless of, of, um, the, the role of the team. Over.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments, um, on this topic? Okay. Um, entertain a motion then to, uh, change the assignment of Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Starley to be involved in contract, con, contracting negotiations. And I think that's contingent on further discussion on what that role will actually be. Um, so would anyone like to make that motion?
This is Commissioner Mills, and I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Do we have support?
Starley, support.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Dushaw?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Bursham is aye. Very good. A M D. Board letter to the governor requesting a statewide face mask requirement. Uh, Administrator Rogers has composed a letter to the governor that we received by email. Um, hopefully, everyone had a chance to read it. Uh, it has got my signature on it as board chair, uh, but I'll turn it over to Administrator Rogers, um, for any more information on this, just to, just for the board and the public, that we discussed this and decided to put it on the agenda, uh, at our leadership team meeting on Monday because of some of the issues that are going on in the community and felt it should be added. And thanks to Administrator Rogers for composing the comments that have been presented before you. Um, would you like to, uh, I'll just turn it over to you, Administrator Rogers, in regards to whether you'd wanna read it or comment more on it?
Um, I, I will read it. I will also comment, thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and commissioners. Um, as you know, some of us, Commissioner Mills and myself and Grace Granager, I'll sit in on a reopening Cook County, um, committee, uh, meeting, and we sit, we, it, they meet every two weeks. And there are members from local businesses, the chamber, the EDA, um, but also, uh, public health obviously is represented, um, there are folks there, uh, from North Shore Health. And together, um, at, at times, that's been a sort of awkward conversation, and Visit Cook County, how could I forget them? Um, it's been an awkward conversation as we try to balance the health concerns of the community with the economic health of the community. And, um, I would just say that the businesses, um, have done a really excellent job of trying to, and Visit Cook County took a great lead on this, um, to create processes so that they could open safely. And, um, the businesses have been taking it very, very seriously. But there has been an underlying conversation, many of the people, uh, in that, in those meetings sent in, uh, requests, uh, to be read today, which were read, um, that it's difficult for them, because they're, they're trying to do all the right things to keep their employees safe, and yet, they're kind of in, put in the position to enforce, um, something, because people come up here and think somehow, oh, they're on vacation from masks, 'cause they're not in the cities or something. So, um, that's, that's what I've heard in addition to all of these letters. And, um, I think what they're hoping, they've been hoping, is that the governor would, um, would make this more of a statewide policy. And, um, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Grammeray has, uh, voted to send a letter to the governor. So, um, I was asked to, to come up with a draft, uh, that we could send to the governor. And this is here for your consideration as a board. Certainly don't have to act on it, or it can be modified if you prefer that. But I'll just read it out loud. "To the Honorable Tim Walz, Governor of Minnesota. Dear Governor Walz, the Cook County Board of Commissioners strongly applauds the leadership you have demonstrated through the course of the COVID pandemic. With sterling advice from the Minnesota Department of Health, University of Minnesota, Mayo Clinic, and others, you have chartered a course that has helped the people of Minnesota escape the worst ravages of this pandemic. It is beyond sad that so many have died, especially those in homes for the most senior and frail of our residents, but it could have been so much worse." And it still could get much worse. As you know, the recent trend in many states, uh, is toward disaster, and even the trend line in Minnesota has moved modestly in the wrong direction in recent days. The capacity to treat patients who require intensive care in Cook County is exactly zero. Cook County, which depends for its livelihood on summer visitors, we have had just one positive case of a resident, plus an additional one test of a resident of Hennepin County who was visiting. We would very much like to keep it that way. Our population is heavily weighted toward those with increased vulnerability. We must protect them, even as we must, as we make welcome large clouds, crowds of visitors, many of whom are not accustomed to our local public health ethic, which strongly embraces mask wearing. For those reasons, we write to respectfully request that you use your emergency powers to impose a uniform statewide mask requirement in all public buildings and all private buildings that provide such public accommodations as lodging, dining, retail sales, professional and personal services, et cetera. We further request that you extend this requirement to all outdoor spaces where crowding makes social distancing not feasible. Currently, the state is such a hodgepodge of requirements that it is difficult, especially for visitors new to a community, to know what is expected of them. One uniform standard would clear away the confusion and help reinforce that wearing mask is a common sense public health response to the pandemic. Those who see mask as an infringement of their freedom have it wrong. Masks are an investment in remaining healthy, both physically and economically. Too many people focus on who will enforce a mask requirement and what the penalties might be. Those concerns miss the point. It is the authority of your office and the uniformity of the requirements that will make a difference. Business owners who are working to keep their staff, their customers, and their community safe need to know and to be able to invoke your support for their sensible efforts. Please support them as they support you. Impose a statewide mask requirement now.
Okay. We'll do a roll call on comments or questions or concerns. We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rena, for, for drafting this. Um, uh, as, as Rena said, I've been sitting, sitting in, um, the Economic Reopening Group, and, um, then I feel like there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of development, which is, uh, within the group, which is, I think, is a healthy sign, um, of people, uh, being willing to, to look critically, uh, at what's going on and what, and what should be done. And, and they're, uh, really impressed with their willingness to, to, to grow and, and change those, those perspectives, uh, including, including my own. Um, uh, initially, I felt like, um, businesses, you know, have, have the, the full legal authority to refuse any customer service if, if they're not following the business's rules, which could include an individual business, uh, requiring, uh, mask. And, and so I thought, uh, initially that isn't, this is just kind of passing the buck to the city or to the county or to the state. Um, and, um, and the feedback and, uh, and just with further thought and reflection, it, it seems that, um, uh, it, it, it'll make things easier for, um, the businesses that are, are struggling with that. There have been a number of confrontations regarding it. And, um, and it'll make our, uh, population as a whole much safer by, by having this uniformity. Um, there is some language in the, in the letter that's a little, a little stronger or, um, or just a different way of saying things than I would, but I, I still find the letter as a whole agreeable, and I would support sending it. Um, and, uh, and I, I still recognize, uh, people's opposition to it, um, whether it be, um, people having their own common sense or, or, or personal freedoms. Um, I, I do recognize that. I just see that, um, what's going on in our county, what's going on in our state, and what's going on in our, our country, um, is, is a, is a better move for this, this type of, of request. So, uh, I think that's all for now, over.
Okay. Commissioner Dushaw?
Yeah, I, um, I guess I wouldn't support this letter. The businesses have their own, can make their own choices, people can make their own choices. Um, to, I got a friend of mine, I just actually had coffee with him this morning, there, that has stage four lung cancer, and he can breathe in a mask. And that's, um, you know, to mandate someone like that, that can't breathe as it is, to wear a mask, is a little, a little overreaching. And, um, I think there's many cases like that, that we don't hear of, but I'm heard, I just heard about it this morning, talking to him, and, um, I guess that's where I stand on this. I, you know, we can recommend it, but, you know, social distancing, you put three thousand people downtown Grammeray, and you need to be six feet apart. Um, it just doesn't fit, and some of the letters that came in... And some of the letters that came in there, I was downtown this weekend, and to say that people are wearing masks in their businesses is false. I witnessed it, that people weren't. And so I guess that's where I stand on that right now. You know, we can recommend it, but to mandate it, no.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk?
Yeah. I understand Bobby's concerns. If anyone listened to the Duluth City Council last night, what they passed, what theirs included is no one under the age of 10, which addresses the concerns of a citizen in trying to get children to wear masks. And they also had an exclusion for people who have an illness or some other reason that they simply can't wear a mask, as Commissioner Dushaw pointed out. The last paragraph of the letter, "Too many people focus on who will enforce mask requirement and what the penalties might be." Those concerns miss the point. I prefer that entire section be taken out, just the part that I read. There aren't a lot of people that are focusing on that, I don't think. I mean, it's part of the discussion, and it doesn't miss the point because I too am concerned how that will be enforced. But I also see the side that if the governor makes the recommendation rather than our community, it will make it easier for law enforcement to enforce it. And as I've stated with our travel notice, it's ridiculous when every city and county has their own notice requirement information. It's always better when it is something that goes across statewide. It's unfortunate that it's not across the entire United States. That would make it really easy, but you know, that's not the world we live in. So I just would like those two sentences removed, and I do have a hard time with this, mostly because I have been lucky to work with and for someone who understands the magnitude of this and wears a mask and has employees wear a mask and who we have not had any negative interactions with the public. But we have had mixed interactions of both local and non-local people desiring to not wear a mask. And so it's a tough one, but we need to do what's best for the health of everyone. Over.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Go ahead.
Commissioner DuKirk, do you think, I understand why you want to strike those two lines, and I agree with you, they're kind of, they're contentious. Would you also like some language added about, it needs to be sensible and not, you know, and have exclusions for people with medical issues and children under a certain age?
Well, we all have a different idea of what sensible is. So just striking those two lines and leaving it to the governor and his people to make the decisions, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know if we want to add follow suit of Duluth City Council, but I mean, just striking those two lines so that what we send is on a positive side of support.
Absolutely. I've already struck them in my copy.
Okay. So as long as I were on this, I'm asking for clarity here. Commissioner DuKirk, you're talking about the first and second statement in the last paragraph.
Yep. The last paragraph would start with the authorities.
Yeah, good. Thank you. I thought that was it, but wanted to make sure we all understood that. Okay. Thank you for your comments on that. Commissioner Sterling, your comment?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, at least three times a week, I listen to the governor's report and Dan Malcolm, and yes, they are getting to the point where they're saying masks required, children under 10, no, anyone who has some physical disabilities with that are not required. So, you know, they're getting closer to it. Today's Tuesday, maybe by Friday, conference, or even maybe tomorrow, they'll come out with a statement. So I support our letter, and striking those two sentences are fine also. I'm just wondering, is the city council on the same wavelength mostly that we are? I've not seen the city council because they just passed it last night. Does anybody know anything about their wording? Over.
No, I don't. But I think they were just, I think they just were sending a letter to the governor encouraging it too. So.
That is my understanding as well, but I haven't read it.
So basically, probably the same, something similar.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I will comment. I do support it, and I think Commissioner DuKirk's suggestion of those last two, or in the last paragraph, the beginning and the second statements, would be eliminated. And so I think I'm going to ask for a motion to see what happens. Oh, go ahead, if you want to comment more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess just to clarify for us as a board, as well as for the public, it's my understanding that we, as the county, don't have the authority to create a mandate to address this. And I'm thinking the city is in a similar situation. Do we have any confirmation of that? The best we can do with either of these organizations would be to write a letter and make a request to the governor. Is that right, Attorney Hickon?
I'm, oh, you're asking Attorney Hickon. Thank you. I was going to ask.
Or Administrator Rogers. Whomever.
If she's not on, I can address it. I, um...
Hi, this is...
Go ahead, Molly.
Rena, I didn't hear. Are you willing to address this, or do you want me to jump in here?
Why don't you go ahead? This is kind of your area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Mills. So the county does not appear to have the authority to require face covering because we haven't been assigned that power through state statutes. It's possible that the sheriff with his authority to take actions which are required for public health or safety could make that order, but that is, that would be uncharted territory. Cook County would be the first county in the state to impose that face covering requirement through the sheriff or otherwise. We've seen in the news that a couple of Wisconsin counties, including Ashland, have passed a similar ordinance recently. But Wisconsin counties get their authority, obviously, from Wisconsin law, and there are differences between Wisconsin and Minnesota laws. Regarding city authority, cities within the state can rely upon their city code. I'm not familiar enough with the Grammeray city code to know whether they have similar provisions to, like, the city of Duluth or the city of Minneapolis in their code. But in general, cities are much better legally situated to pass health-related regulations. So as Commissioner DuKirk mentioned, last night in a unanimous vote, the Duluth City Council voted to approve an emergency ordinance, which requires people ages 10 and older to wear masks or other face coverings. And the city of, so they did so by emergency ordinance. The city of Minneapolis and other cities have done so by mayoral proclamation, which is a power specific to the executive in a city and which doesn't have an equivalent by the county. So, you know, my analysis thus far is that the county couldn't, doesn't have the authority to move forward to mandate masks on its own. But should the county wish, should commissioners wish to continue to explore that possibility of taking some action other than a recommendation or a letter to the governor, I'm absolutely willing to continue to research it as long as that, you know, if we have the support of our public health leadership.
And thank you, Attorney Hickon, for that. And I guess it was just in response to some of the public comments, as well as just a social media post at saying the county needs to impose this. And, you know, I just want to recognize those and say that we're, you know, doing what we see as the best available opportunity for us by making the request. My understanding of the, and this is outside of our jurisdiction and our expertise, but my understanding is the city needs to be a charter city in order to do those, but I could be wrong there. Again, that's neither here nor there as far as our county operations are concerned, but just worth mentioning there. Over.
Thank you. Yes, I think my understanding too is that this is the most logical way to proceed for now, and if the governor does or doesn't do it, that's another decision. And I think the city, from what I've heard, could revisit it contingent upon what the governor does or doesn't do. And maybe we, as a county, could do that as well, as Attorney Hickon said. So with that, any other comments or...
I do have, this is Rena, Mr. Chair. I do have one other comment. I, I'm not sure if you caught it all because Grace Granager, Public Health Supervisor, certainly has long and very thorough updates for us. But one of the things she mentioned was that they're putting together a diverse committee of people to come up with some proactive strategies for education and ways to encourage the use of face coverings by people in our community, either visiting or the ones who live here. So there's that proactive piece on the back end that we're also trying to encourage as well and allow, and hopefully allow some consistency from the highest level at the state, make that easier for businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for pointing that out. Rena, that was something I did catch, and I'm very pleased with, because I think that is the most effective thing we can do. Looking back at the stay-at-home orders, you know, there too, there were concerns about enforcement or penalties and, or just what's effective. And, you know, it was not the focus point. The focus point was the education on being safe and staying safe and doing our part. And so I still think that is the best thing. But, you know, if, looking at other states, and we're by no means close to some of those that are worst hit, but if it's, you know, the option of shutting down again versus wearing masks, I think we can all agree that wearing masks is a much better option. So I'm hoping that we can all get on board here. Over.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Dushaw.
Any other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Dushaw.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Dushaw.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that I've been on this board for over three years now. This is a typical Cook County board meeting. There's one differing opinion here, and we don't talk about that opinion. We just stick to the other fours. Besides Heidi, the other three of you didn't have any statements on my comment, you know? And that's, it's pretty frustrating being a commissioner when it's such a one-sided board, and it's been like that for three years now. And I was hoping there would have been a little change over the three years, but there hasn't. That's all I got.
Okay. It's unfortunate you feel that way.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Dushaw, for expressing your frustration and concern. It was my intention to address your concerns earlier. I guess maybe I wasn't direct enough. And I guess what it comes down to is my larger concern for the public and just doing what I think is going to help the larger public and health there. Like I mentioned, I did feel like it was kind of like passing the buck earlier, but as difficult as it is, I think this is what's better for the greater good there. If there's some more specific concerns, I'd be happy to talk about this further now. But I'm not intentionally avoiding your concerns by any means.
Any other comments, concerns?
Commissioner DuKirk?
Go ahead.
Bobby, I kind of feel like your take on this is no letter to the governor, and maybe I'm wrong on that. Do you have another suggestion, or would you like the language to include to not require certain individuals with health issues to wear masks? And then also the children, I know I said I didn't think that needed to be in there, but if that would address some of your concerns, I'm more than willing to add that. Please let me know how you feel.
No, the thing that, the thing that I add in my comment was a recommendation and not a mandate, you know? If they're concerned about all the people coming to Cook County, do we start limiting the amount of people that come to Cook County? You know, I've, I don't know. I guess I talk to a different demographic, a bunch of people than you do. And, you know, to mandate something, in my opinion, is government overreach, so. You know, each business, each business has its own right to who enters their property and who doesn't enter their property. You know, I was at the point this weekend eating my to-go food, and I would say 90-plus percent of the people down there weren't wearing a face mask, they weren't social distancing. You know, who, you know, it comes down to the enforcement thing. Do we need to hire a bunch more deputies to drive around and look for people with face masks and not social distancing? You know, if you read the...
I have the same concern as you do with how that enforcement will be done. I don't know how that will go forward, but just your statement that 90% of the people weren't wearing masks kind of leads to the whole reason why this request is coming from the community. I hope that you can see that and understand that. Again, do you have specific language that you would like us to change or add to the document? I'm more than willing to talk about that.
Any other comments or questions before I'm going to ask for a motion with a minor change? So please state your name if you have any more comments on this topic, agenda item.
Commissioner Mills?
Go ahead, Commissioner Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Commissioner Dushaw, for bringing this up and talking about it more. I guess the whole mandate and requirement thing, in my mind, again, I was trying to touch on this earlier with the stay-at-home order, and how does one enforce that? And, you know, I think above all, this kind of request and a mandate or whatever really emphasizes, it's a stronger, it's a stronger request than a request. And the emphasis, I don't think, is... And, and the emphasis, I don't think, is, is on the enforcement, it's, it's more on the seriousness of the request. And so it is, it is very practical to, to think about, um, the challenges of, of enforcement. But, um, much like the, the challenges of enforcing a stay-at-home order, um, what are you doing out? Should you be out? Do you need to be out? Like, I, I didn't hear a whole lot of those stories, um, and, uh, I did, I did hear of some, though, if people are causing trouble, I remember Sheriff's Life, and could, could fall back onto that if necessary. And, and I think it would be a similar situation if, if the governor, um, you know, imposed the, uh, a, a face covering mandate. Um, it's just something that could be, most people are going to comply, most people, um, are, are cooperative and understand the severity and the seriousness of this. But, um, but this is just a much stronger message for those who are not. And, um, hearing from some of the local businesses about the conflicts they have, um, daily conflicts, uh, I think it is, uh, by and large, um, going to be helpful for our community and for our, our business community. And I don't think we, we need to limit the number of people visiting if we can all, um, live and work safely together, and I think face coverings are an excellent tool in, in doing that. So, um, yeah, certainly, I cer, I certainly see the, the weakness of, of a mandate, logistically, and, and your, your concerns are very valid. It's, it's just, again, kind of weighing our options and, and what's going to give us the best outcomes is kind of where I'm coming from. Over.
Governor Stein?
Yes, Commissioner Starly?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Dishaw, in a few months or a month and a half, you're going to be tribal chair. Um, how are you going to approach this, um, as Grand Ford? What ideas do you have and what ideas will the community have?
Um, those will be addressed once I am the tribal chair. You know-
Okay, so you're not in planning anything in particular right now?
They, they already have-
I know that the reservation had been closed to the public at one time?
Um, they're already have, um, they're, the businesses do have their masks, um, whatever they want to call it, a casino in the store there anyway, so.
Okay. So when you become tribal chair, then, um, you'll deal with that in another month or so, where we are, or where you're going to be at that time?
Right.
Thank you.
You know, this, this reminds me, this reminds me of, um, when we had the refugee, refugee debate, um, half of the community really supported it, how, the other half of the community didn't support it. And this is kind of the, the same thing here, you know? I talked to a lot of people that support it, and I talked to a lot of people that don't support it. You know, this is, this is almost a document that, it's just like the refugee thing, it, it's divided the community. You know, what, why don't we just, um, wait till the governor to make his move, whichever way he's going to go?
This is Commissioner Mills?
Mr. Mills, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you for the continued discussion, Commissioner Dishaw. I, I feel like, as, as, as Commissioner, it's, it's my duty to, um, to lead and to, to, uh, make the harder decisions on, on what we feel our community and the health of our community, what, what's best for us. And so, um, waiting for the governor, in my mind, is not leadership in this case, um, sometimes that could be. But, um, the, the feedback that I've been getting, by and large, not exclusively or a hundred percent, from the business community, is that this would be a helpful, a helpful thing. Um, and, uh, and you're right, I am, I am certainly getting feedback from, from people that, that I respect, um, that, that say we don't need this and it'll make our lives, um, it's just one more thing that we, we're going to have to deal with. And, but by and large, what I'm hearing is, is that, uh, this will, this will simplify things a little bit for us so that, you know, the bulk of our visitors know what to expect when they get here, and, uh, will, will reduce conflicts, reduce, um, the strain on employees and, and business owners. And so, um, I, I, I recognize that's divisive, I'm not really sure why, um, I don't really see the harm, I think people see it as symbolically harmful, um, but, but I'm trying to find, um, the, the safest, uh, path forward for our community. Over.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to make one comment, I think the fourth paragraph, you know, rewrite to respectfully request that you use emergency powers to impose the uniform statewide mask requirement in our building and so forth. Um, and I think this is, you know, re, a request. And, uh, so we're not declaring that this is what is going to happen, we're, we're encouraging a process and supporting the governor and asking him to use his emergency powers for it. Um, I think what, as board chair, right now, we've had a lot of discussion, and it was very, very good discussion, and I think authentic and honest. So I'm going to propose, uh, to see if we can get a motion to approve this letter with the omission of, in the last paragraph, the first two statements, which I'll read. Too many people focus on who will enforce the mask requirement and what the penalties might be, and the second statement is those concerns miss the point. So with Commissioner Kirk's, uh, recommendation, we would exclude that from this. So I'm going to, with that understanding, uh, I'm going to see if there's going to be a motion to approve this, a letter to our governor.
This is Commissioner Mills, I'll move to approve the letter.
Okay, and do we have support?
Starlee, support.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner DuKer?
Dan, why do you got to call on me first? Aw, this is so hard.
Well, I've got a random process, I'm sorry, I've been, I've got a random process going here. Yeah. If you want to, uh, pass it on to someone else, I'll-
No, it's my job to not pass it on to someone else. Um, I lean strongly towards where Commissioner Dishaw is. Um, you know, when we sent out our advisory letter before the governor actually did the shutdown, we divided our community. Um, I, I don't want to divide the community anymore, but this is also the recommendation of our public health and our having a mass discussion, and as Commissioner Mills said, this can't be political and we don't want to divide people, we want to bring people together and make it better for our entire community. So I will support the motion. Over.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills. Aye.
Commissioner Dishaw?
Uh, no.
Okay, Commissioner Starley?
I'm going to say aye as a recommendation to the governor. We're not telling him what to do, we're just asking him to consider all the aspects of this, so aye.
Okay, that's your interpretation. Okay, Commissioner Bursham, aye, passes as proposed and written with the elimination of those first two statements in the last paragraph. Thank you. We'll move on to, yeah, go ahead.
Can we include at the bottom of the letter that it passed with four yes and one nay, just in recognition of-
I think we always do, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
I just want to make sure that's included.
Yeah, I think we always do, yeah. Yeah, now, thank you for, um, I think that's always assumed, but it's good to mention, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Old Shore Road Parcel, um, Letter to Mindot. Um, there again, want to thank Commissioner, I mean, excuse me, Administrator Rogers for doing some work, uh, on seeing how we could proceed, and I visited the property that we're, is in question, and I know she spent a lot of time on it. So she has a letter that, um, she's composed a letter to Mindot and, uh-
Actually, actually, I have not composed a letter yet, but this is, this is a request, um, about, about sending a letter.
Thank you.
Um, so if I, I could, just for, for people who may not be up to speed on this, a few weeks ago, um, we heard from, uh, one of the residents down in this location, just below the Chippewa church on the lake shore down there, that, uh, people are using that beach and, um, going on private property and littering and going to the bathroom and, and creating noise at all hours of the night. And his, uh, his request, he had several requests, but it, it largely was, look, if that's a public area, you need to manage it. And, um, that's a, that's a reasonable request. So I, I had never even heard of Passion Pit before, not having gone to high school here. Um, but I went down, um, I've been down there now with a number of different people, just try and looked at maps, talked to Mindot, just trying to understand what we have down there. Um, so this, this particular piece of land, this area below the Chippewa church, was, um, back in the turn of the last century, was, um, was a Chippewa village. And, um, through an unfortunate history that's chronicled in a recent book by Stacy Juilliard, uh, Walking the Old Road, the folks that lived there lost their land, and, um, that land ended up, um, in becoming part of a platte. And as part of that platte, there was, um, the county was, uh, given acts, was given, deeded access for road, a road that goes through there, but also, um, a little strit, strip that's thirty-five feet wide that provides public access to the lake. Um, on the east side of, uh, that, that little thirty-five wide strip is, is some acreage, um, is a few acres and, um, I think a couple hundred feet of shoreline that currently is in possession by Mindot, um, that they used for gravel pit, uh, back when they were first doing, uh, County Road sixty-one, which is all grown over now. And then to the other side, to the west, there's a piece of private property, and then just beyond that one piece of private property, which is unoccupied, um, there is another parcel of Mindot property. Um, many of the residents along the beach, uh, over the decades have been, uh, seasonal, and so often there's an appearance that this big, wide, beautiful, really lovely beach is public. And because of that thirty-five foot wide strip, that, you know, the county wasn't really running a park there or in any way trying to, to manage it, but the public perception is that this is a county park. So it's complicated, it's a, it's a very complicated, um, situation, and, uh, I've spent time trying to understand it, and I've heard from a number of people. There are people who are interested in it being allowed still to go on the beach, there are people who see the historical significance of this area and would like to see, um, see it maybe used in a way that honors the people who had lived there before, as well as a public park. There are private owners along that beach, um, many of them with the means to do it, who are, uh, just interested in buying up all that property and closing it to the public. Um, so that's where we are. Um, I have been contacted and actually just got a email a few minutes ago from, um, Mike Roth, the city administrator, Graham Ray, saying, um, I saw that this is on the agenda today, and, and I have talked to the mayor about this as well, that the city has a Parks Department and the county doesn't, but that the city, if the county decides to move forward with this, maybe could be a partner with us, and their park, their Parks Department could do things like trash or restrooms or something. So, it's a lot of conversation and a lot of possibilities. Um, I spent, uh, about an hour and a half on the phone, uh, the week before last, with several individuals at Mindot, um, we were all on a Zoom, they were all working from home, and, uh, was trying to understand, you know, what our options are. And, um, they basically said, look, you know, uh, if, if the, if the county were to send a letter, and they gave me the person's name, to this person saying, uh, that, that Cook County is simply expressing the county's interest in either acquiring that tax parcel or we could also just, or the, uh, the option is to do a, a lease of that with Mindot, which would be a no-cost lease, that, that puts everything else on hold. And so basically what that does is it, you know, a, a private property owner can't come up and we have priority then, if we, if we just simply send that letter. And, and, um, kind of first right of refusal, and it, and that process alone puts everything kind of on hold for about a year. So my request is simply, let's send them the letter, there's no harm in it, it, in no way obligates the county to take action in the future. I mean, a year comes up, they, they make the point to us, so do you want the lease? Do you want to acquire it? What do you want to do here? And the county at that time could look at it and go, we've looked at it and we decide no. We would be fine with that. So really, all we're doing is creating some space so that these community conversations can continue. Um, and if there is a good solution there, one with the historical society, or one with the city, or whoever, we have the opportunity, um, we have the space and the time to have that discussion, probably with the Parks and Trails Committee and a wider community discussion. So, um, if we don't do this and a private, um, party comes and decides to buy it, that opportunity for that discussion will be lost to us probably forever. So simply my request is just to send a very simple letter, um, expressing our interest in either acquiring it or setting up a temporary lease. Um, and in that process then, uh, we have some space to make other decisions. And if anyone has questions about that, I'm happy to take them.
Well, we'll do a roll call on that, um, for any comments, questions, and start with Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Well, I think it's a good first step. I mean, we, uh, reach out and we see what's, uh, out there to, uh, guide us, and, um, like, um, Administrator Rena said, um, we'll see in the future where it goes, but we need to start with the conversation. Over.
Thank you. Commissioner Dishaw?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a good move.
Commissioner DuKer?
Well, I'm just going to say this is total bullshit. Um, I've got a landing in my district, and it's been an issue for probably the same amount of time, if not more. The same issues with people defecating on private property, cars parking on private property, driveways being blocked. There was just a complaint this week about private boats being stored on county land, and nothing's being done. The former highway engineer and myself went out to the property and spent time there with the former county administrator over a year ago. No action has been taken, no request to purchase land along the side of it. There is another landing in my district that has been an issue, and I believe a restraining order was issued to a private citizen because of the issues on that landing, and nothing was done. Bobby can speak to the fact that Arvis Thompson has come before the board numerous times to discuss Polville Town Hall and the repairs that need to be done on that facility. Has anyone taken time to go out and spent hours with her to look at what's going on with that building? I have asked over and over again for us to address the buildings that we already own- I have asked over and over again for us to address the buildings that we already own. We're not fixing them, we're not repairing them, we're not upkeeping them. And now we're talking about sending a letter to Mindot for Lake Superior property valued at $283,000. There is a building on that property, one more thing for us to take care of because one citizen came forward and complained. This is absolutely ridiculous, beyond ridiculous. We have other things to take care of. And I understand that this letter puts the brakes on, I totally get that. And that may make sense, but it's fucking bullshit. I am so fed up with certain people getting what they want. This person got 10 minutes to talk to the board and then our chair said, let's have a discussion with them, when every time I have responded to a citizen, I have been censored and told not to talk during public comment. Out of line, out of line. When are we going to pay attention to other people that live here? When are we going to pay attention to the locals? When are we going to pay attention? Why does this one thing get this attention? And before I lose it any further and swear, I am over.
Hey, Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I think this is a good, a good way to slow the process down a little bit. I recognize the similarities and the frustrations that Commissioner DuKirk has expressed. I see some differences as well. I'm not, I'm somewhat familiar with, with the landing issue while I sat on the Parks and Trails Commission. And, and I think there have been discussions and some poking around a little bit to look at options. And, and I don't, I don't see the same risk potential as far as loss of public property and loss of access. But there still certainly are some unresolved issues in Commissioner DuKirk's district and I don't think they're, they're, have been forgotten. I think another one of the differences with, with the Passion Pit beach situation is, is the amount of use it gets, I think, has a lot of people, people, a higher number of people's attention. And, and this by no means is, is, you know, diminishing the, the conflicts that, that are happening up, up the trail with the landings and we still need to, to work on those. I think it does show, both, both situations, I think, do show how our county is, is changing and how it is growing and how our, our county government needs to respond. And I think a good first step there was with the formation of the Parks and Trails Commission. And as was pointed out by Administrator Rogers, the county doesn't have a Parks and Trails or a Parks Department per se. And so the proximity to Graham Ray or, or even within does put this particular property in another potential partnership with, with the city having, having the ability to, to help manage that. So I do appreciate Administrator Rogers reaching out to Mindot and, and looking at what our options might be. And I think we're gonna, we're gonna, it's gonna be a longer process and no, no doubt we'll have frustrations along the way, but I think this is, as Commissioner Starley said, a real good first step. And I, I do hope that, you know, whatever, whatever solutions that we find, we do incorporate the historical significance of, of that area. I think that's all. Over.
Thank you. I would like to comment, I agree, I think, with what Commissioner Mills is saying. And in, one of the things that has interested me in this is the proximity of the property to Xavier Church, the Chippewa City. And it's an opportunity to at least take a look at how we can represent the historical significance of that area. And if we can acquire property for, you know, access to a beach, but also look at its relationship to that Chippewa City property, that we have some potential here that's a little unique. And it may not be just a Parks and Trails thing, but it might be a greater magnitude of collaboration, as was mentioned, with, definitely with the city, as well as possibly the Historical Society or with our tribal community. So with that, I think that's a good way to proceed. Any other comments or questions or concerns? Go ahead, Commissioner DuKirk.
We still have a Parks and Trails Commission. We have a land commissioner that has not been involved in this conversation, who is responsible for the public landing. And we did not dissolve our Parks and Trails Department. It has been absorbed by Land Services. So why don't we go through the right channels and processes, or are we gonna put the cart before the horse and then deal with it after?
If I, if I could, I'd like to address that. This was.
Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner DuKirk, this is in no way an attempt to bypass any of those things. There, there were legitimate people, private owners trying to, were petitioning Mindot to buy a property. I had one of them actually offer to buy our 35 foot strip. And yet I had other people saying, you know, you, you need to do something here to balance this out. So all, all I am doing here is slowing down a process so that the Parks and Trails Committee can take it up and look at what the options are. And this is in no way trying to say that what the outcome is going to be, it's just allowing enough time for that process to work. So I was not at all trying to put, put my own agenda in place. I was simply trying to slow down a process so that the process had time to work. That's all.
Thank you for your work on this and meeting with the citizens. I'm just frustrated that other people have said, you need to do something and we do nothing. I mean, I literally had to threaten to go up and deal with the situation myself on a landing we own in order for action to be taken. And so I am just incredibly frustrated that in this one situation, someone says jump and we say, how high? So I am sorry, and sorry, I swear to the public, it's just really frustrating when it feels like everyone else who has asked us to do something has been ignored.
So I appreciate that. And I, we've actually had some conversation that included the land commissioner about some of those landings up there and the possibility of seeing if, if the DNR could take them over. So we're looking at those. I would also say I've had at least two conversations with Arvis about the Colville Town Hall and what the options are there. So this, this one just kind of flew up and, and it needed a response of some sort. So I, I care about those other ones too, but I think this one does have some unique elements.
Thank you.
With that, going to try to proceed here, I would ask if someone would like to make a motion to approve a letter to be sent to Mindot expressing the county's interest in acquiring tax parcel, number 53122-2127, located on Old Shore Road.
This is Commissioner Mills, don't move.
Okay, thank you. Do we have support?
Starley, support.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKirk?
Reluctantly and still frustrated, I say aye.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner Burson's aye. That's a few in the fleet. CARES Act Fund Distribution, request approval to proceed with CARES Act Fund Distribution as proposed by the CARES Act Task Force. Turn that over again to Administrator Rogers.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So back in June, in June, when was it, 9th, I, I came to the board and asked if, if you all would allow me to put together a CARES Act Funding Task Force to help look at ideas and possible ways to distribute money that we were going to get from the federal government. As you know, that got delayed quite a bit by the legislature locking up, locking horns over this and other issues, but it was finally released and we received our funding last week. The scope of what I'm going to be talking about is part of, there's quite a few different pockets of CARES funding. The schools get their own money, the tribes get their own money, hospital got its own money. But what we're talking about is money specifically that comes to local government, counties, cities, and towns. In the first document that I included, it's a kind of a, a one pager overview of the CARES funding for local governments. You can see that Cook County received $730,000, $730,087. And the city of Graham Ray has received its own allocation of $106,230. Our three townships also received funds, Lutzen $10,900, Tofti $6,775, and Schroeder $5,425. All of these numbers are population based in, in terms of how they distributed the money. Now there, there's, you can't just like say, woo-hoo, you know, what, what are we going to do with this money? Because it's, we don't have any, you know, they just sent it to us. There actually are quite a few restrictions on it. And it's, the main purpose of it is about that it must be necessary expenditure due to COVID-19. So some of the things that I've listed here, these are sort of high level, but that it needs to be direct COVID-19 expenses, worker comp and unemployment costs can be, it can be used for that. Payroll expenses for employees whose services are substantially dedicated to COVID-19. Expenses not budgeted for like equipment, signage, technology. And that it can be used to reimburse hospitals, schools, individuals, businesses for COVID-19 related disruptions. It can't be just saying, you know, like a business can't say, well, I lost $100,000 in April from lost revenue. It can't, can't replace lost revenue. It can't be used for expenses for which we've received other reimbursements. So a lot of things that we've been doing in this emergency, we will get funding back from FEMA. So if we're getting it from FEMA, we can also use CARES funding for the same receipts. And it can't be used to pay property taxes for people that are affected. The other caveat, which makes this really interesting and complicated, is that the money has to be spent between March 1st of this year and it has to be spent, spent by December 30th of this year. So we can't grant money to somebody and then for a program that they're going to institute next year. It has to be spent this year. And, and it will be, I think, audited. So we, after I asked for a task force, we set that up, we have people on there that represent our county government, which is Brady Powers, the auditor and myself. We have Grace Grenager representing Public Health, Allison McIntyre representing Human Services, and we included Mary Somnus from the EDA and also Jim Boyd from the Chamber. We've had some great discussions. The assignment that I gave them as a task force was to basically generate a list of expenditures, expenditures and needs that the funding could address and then identify some basic processes that would streamline that distribution. This is obviously, there's a lot of overhead that's involved for our auditor's office in what is becoming a busy year with the elections. So we've, Auditor Powers and I've spent a fair amount of time talking about how can we make this as simple and straightforward as possible. Obviously, the easiest thing to do is look at money that's already been spent. For instance, our, the laptops we use to get people working remotely, turns out FEMA won't pay for those. That totals out to about a little over $17,000. We have the receipts for that. That's money that can come right back into our capital accounts, right, just transferred from this. So any money that we don't spend by 1230 goes back. And so that's kind of, that's kind of the premise of all of that. So what we did is, and what I really, I believe in personally, and I guess I'm asking the board to bless this approach today, is I, I know that there are some counties out there that are just trying to fill their own gaps in their own spending. They're trying to figure out ways to, to just do that. Grace Grenager said she was at a meeting of Northeast Counties and ours was the only county that had included public health in the conversation, which is amazing to me. I think the legislature had ongoing conversation when they were trying to pass this, that counties should be required to spend at least 20% on local businesses to help them with expenditures that they've made. So I had that sort of amount in my head, that percentage, as I was walking through this. And having looked at all the lists and the different ideas, I, I kind of, I kind of quartered it up, not exactly, but the first thing that I did is I looked at, at the unfunded things that the county has already invested in. Things like courthouse security, having, having our deputy here every day because of the partial opening with the courts. Looking at our HVAC systems and how, you know, what kind of maintenance or cleaning or new filters we might need to make our buildings safer and more resistant to virus, viruses floating around. Our technology support for our remote work, building modifications like putting in glass spaces in our auditor's office so that during election season, that service window is safe for, for employees and for the public, those sorts of things. Looked at all those things, tried to guess what we were going to spend going forward over the next five months and came up with a range. And that's literally how I did it. And this is a suggested range, this is not, it's like not to say at all, I'm looking at the PowerPoint now, that the county is going to spend $175,000 or not more than $220,000, but this is my best guess of what range the county expenses will fall into. So I had suggested 175 to 220 of the 730,000. Now we looked at public health, things that aren't covered again by FEMA or other grants, things like case investigation, contact tracing, maybe hiring another person part-time to do that. Looking at public health, specific communications, education, maybe things around, around face coverings, other kinds of essential services for people in isolation, quarantine, different public health projects within community agencies, and then technical assistance and support for our local businesses and employees. Those were some of the public health recommendations. And I would just say that probably a lot of the public health processes are going to go, and as well as human services, will go through our public health advisory team where we already have a pretty robust, a pretty robust process for granting money to local not-for-profits. So they will be looking at modifying their process so that it can go very quickly and be CARES related. So that's, that's how that money will likely be distributed, so.
Any questions?
Sure, go for it.
Isn't that stuff in there reimbursable?
Some of it.
Through FEMA?
Some of it is and some of it isn't, as we're, we're learning. So we, we will be very careful with that. Kelly Berg from our auditor's office has been doing a lot of the online training for the CARES funding and trying to understand where it is, and she's done a lot with the FEMA as well. One of the things that we, turns out we have to pay for. One of the things that we, turns out we have to pay for out of, out of the CARES funding is we have a 25% match of whatever money we get back from FEMA, we get from FEMA, we have to match that. So, we'll be able to use the CARES funds for that, and there's an expectation from the state that we would do that. And Brady, I don't know if you're still on the line, but anything I say incorrectly here, you are certainly welcome to jump in and correct me. So, public health and human services are, human services funding, I think, will kind of go in two buckets. It'll probably be some emergency assistance, like direct dollars to individuals to prevent housing crises or assistance for food and other basic needs. And you might say, "Well, do we have any problem with that now?" No, but our unemployment, that extra $600 a week that families have been getting or individuals have been getting ends pretty soon here, at the end of this month. So, I, I think we all anticipate an uptick in people struggling once that, once that ends. We're looking at services for people in recovery and treatment. One of the ideas there, just to give you an idea, is to maybe set up a special program that, additional program for people in recovery and treatment, and use this as seed money to set that up, and then that becomes a billable service, so back to the state or to insurance companies. So, we would use seed money to set up something more ongoing that will matter as we go through COVID and other ways too. So, the other, the other part would be looking at funding our local nonprofit community human services organizations to, to whatever needs they might have experienced with COVID and increased clientele or, or other things like that. So, that, both for the human services and public health, I put a range of between $100,000 and $150,000. And if you use the top numbers that I did, that adds up to our total. But again, this is very fluid, and some, one group might end up spending more and another might be spending less. So, it's, this is kind of our best guess at how it might go. The business community came back, and they said, "Look, what, what we could do right now is get money back in people's hands, who had to lay out money as a result of modifying their businesses, putting in a service window, Plexiglas, PPE for their staff, building picnic tables for outside seating. If they have receipts for those things, the, the business community recommended, and this is their exact recommendation, reimburse for-profit and not-for-profit businesses with grants between $500 and $2,500 for COVID-19 expenses incurred in purchasing equipment, supplies, building materials, and other goods, or making changes to buildings and grounds to meet government requirements and recommendations for keeping staff safe and customers safe. Qualifying purchases include but are not limited to such items as computers, software, and other high-tech goods. Many of our folks had to create new websites for online ordering and stuff, that, that's where that would come from, linens, protective gear, cleaning equipment, alterations to building structure and grounds, Plexiglas barriers, and new outdoor seating." So, they, they said, you know, they, we gave them a range of 180 to 210,000. And within that 210,000 is a 5% reimbursement for business reimbursement to cover overhead. So, if the EDA is the one managing all of this granting and stuff, they could, they would be able to bill back to the county for their time spent. And built into the county government operation is also 5% fund management for all the overhead reporting and auditing for human services, public health, and county government operations. So, that's, that's a proposal at a high level. You know, each, each suggested piece of, of spending will need to be reviewed by the auditor's office to make sure that we're meeting the guidelines and we're not getting reimbursed somewhere else. And so, I just want, was hoping that I could review this with, with you all this morning and get your kind of blessing on the approach, if possible, and also ask you what kind of reporting back you would like us to do, a monthly report on how the spending is going or what, what you would be looking for from Auditor Powers and myself. That's it. I'll take questions.
Okay. Well, let's do a roll call vote on questions or comments. And I think your question about reporting to the county board, commissioners, the process, so if someone could comment on that, if you have a suggestion, but also any other comments or questions you have. Let's start with Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, Chairman. No specific questions. This is all going to roll out over the next few months, and I trust that the task force will cover things that are really important in our community, and it'll be backed up by Brady in the end. So, thanks, Rena, for putting this together so far, and I appreciate all your efforts in making it as fair as we can across the board. Over.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duchesne?
No questions. It looks good, and I think a monthly report would be good on that.
Okay. We can, we can definitely-
Okay, monthly reporting, okay.
We can definitely-
Am I hearing correctly, monthly reporting?
Yes.
And I, I was just going to add that we could, we can definitely get that on the agenda, on a monthly, how it's going and how the spending's going.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner DuKer?
No questions. Thank you, Rena, and the rest of the people on the committee for your work on this, and I also would appreciate a monthly report. Thank you, over.
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Administrator Rogers. I, I think it looks like a very good plan, and, and thank you for being proactive and putting this together. I am especially thankful for the public health side of things, although I do know the, the costs towards the business community have been significant. So, I, I think that's a real good emphasis in there too. And yes, I would appreciate a monthly report to see how it's going and if there's any ways to improve and, and all that, so. But, looks great. Thank you very much for your work. Over.
That's why I would like to commend Administrator Rogers and all those that had a lot of input on this, that seemed like a very good collaborative approach. And I think as much as we can, we should help our business and our community in this regard, and, and so appreciate that work that's being done. So, with that-
Mr. Chair- Well, Mr. Chair, I just had, yeah, I just wanted to add, I, I don't think, looking at all the categories of cost, I don't think they will have difficulty spending the funds. One thing I'm going to look at close and advise is that, especially the county, that what we look at, the, we evaluate the importance of it, do we need, would we spend this or recommend spending it regardless of any funding? It should have that level of importance. And then, if we have this money to pay for it, that's a great bonus. They should be, I think, of that importance. So, that's the eye I'll be looking at them.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification and additional information. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mills?
Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Auditor Powers, for playing that out. I, I appreciate that greatly in that we're not whimsical and that we, we, we see this funding as, as necessary to help with our, our government operations as well as our business operations and just the needs that this pandemic has, has put upon us. Over.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call for a motion to, for approval to proceed with this CARES Act Fund Distribution with reporting to the Board monthly.
Commissioner Mills, so, so move.
Okay. Does someone have support? Okay. Do a little call vote. Commissioner Starley?
Aye.
Commissioner DuKer?
Aye.
Commissioner Duchesne?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
This is Commissioner Mills, aye.
Mr. Bershain, aye. Very good. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to Administrator update. Anything else, Commissioner? Administrator Rogers?
You know what? I think I'm talked out today.
You've had, you've, you've had the majority of the time vocalizing this morning, and thank you for all your work, as well as participation at a very high level. Okay, so, we'll go to Commissioner reports under employee concern, Commissioner concern. Any Commissioners want to give a report? Okay, meeting's gone off.
Chairman, Chairman, yes?
Yes.
I would like to. I'd like to mention, yesterday I was at the extension meeting, and you were there too, Chairman Bershain. And I want to bring up something that's really important in our community, and that's the snack pack program. Diane has worked tirelessly in this program to make sure that children who need some extra boosting on their menus, that she gets this out to them. When the school was on, this was a weekend project, and now that school is off, she distributes a fuller box of food to sustain the families with, you know, canned fruit, vegetables, spaghetti sauce, cheese, and all that. And she does this through donations. She mentioned that she has, over the last few years, of course, an increase of need. Last year was about 45 needs between Tofti and Grand Portage. This year, so far, 63. And with the possibility of funding ending for families here in July, that number should go up. So, just putting this out for the public to know that she receives donations and money, and I know that she certainly appreciates all that that she can get because I think the requests will be going up higher for food boxes. So, thank you on that.
Now, thank you for bringing that up, very important to our community, especially during these times. Also agree to really commend Diane Booth for her concern for our young people, as well as everyone else in the county. But this is something she's taken on, and, and no funding is coming from any other sources but donations. Yes. Okay. Meeting update, we'll have a closed session after the committee, the whole meeting next Tuesday. And for Correspondents, Men, Men, Memos, we have July anniversaries, and thanks to Commissioner DuKer again for your work on this and this recognition. So, I would like to call on you to honor our employees with their anniversaries.
Thank you, Chairman Bershain. I'm going to start with an apology for my swearing and my outburst. There's no excuse for that, and seven years of watching things not get done got the best of me. So, hopefully, the next person in my position will be able to get things accomplished. With that, I will move on to anniversaries. Beth Benson, one year in public health and human services. Juan Mendietro, two years in public health and human services. Mitch Iverson, ten years in land services. Christopher Benstead, three years at our recycling center. Molly Hickon, lucky thirteen years in our county attorney's office. Philip Larson, four years in our soil and water district office. Caitlin Manel, one year dispatch at our sheriff's department. Britta Moose, three years dispatch at our sheriff's office. Chris Schrupp, seven years as a deputy in our sheriff's office. Dagmar Smith, four years in public health and human services. And yes, I did skip one incredibly special person, Mr. Brady Powers, 29 years as our auditor treasure. I will miss you when I'm gone, and thank you all for the work that you have done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for your apologies, and can understand your frustration, I'm sure, with some issues. With that, I believe we're going to adjourn, so I will adjourn this meeting effective at this time, and thanks to everyone for their work today and expressing their concerns, and hopefully, we can move on and still serve the public and the common good as best we can. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, over.